We're calling the meeting to order. The NVUSD Board of Education is holding a regular virtual board meeting tonight that all can participate in remotely. You can join via Zoom. Specific directions and how to participate are located on the Board of Education webpage on the district's website, nvusd.org/Board. The open session part of the meeting agenda begins at 7:00 PM. Before going into closed session, the board is available for public comment on closed session agenda items. Is there any public comment on closed session items?
We do not have public comment on closed session items.
Thank you, Mr. Michaels. Seen, there are none of the Napa Valley Unified School District will now adjourn to closed session. And see you back at seven. Thank you. Good evening. We are we committing to open session. My name is Elba Gonzalez-Mares and this is the Napa Valley Unified School District Board of Education. The NVUSD Board of Education is holding a regular board meeting tonight that all can participate remotely. You can join via Zoom. Buenas noches, mi nombre es Elba Gonzalez Mares y esta es la mesa de educación del distrito escolar unificado del Valle de Napa. NVUSD por sus siglas en inglés. La mesa de educación de NVUSD está llevando a cabo una reunión regular esta noche en la que todos pueden participar de forma remota. Pueden unirse a través de Zoom. Interpretation in Spanish is available for tonight's virtual board meeting. To access interpretation from a computer, click on the interpretation icon on the bottom of your screen from within the Zoom application. On a mobile device, click on the more button on the bottom of your screen and choose language interpretation from within the Zoom application. This is a separate channel that we all, that will allow you to hear English to Spanish translation concurrently. Please note interpretation services are not available when you join our meeting by calling in. Our interpreters for tonight's meeting are Marcy Valdivieso and Claudia Lindgren. Will we have one of the interpreters? Please translate these directions on our English channels so our Spanish speaking families can hear the instructions.
Buenas noches, habrán servicios de interpretación esta noche proveidos por Marcy Valdivieso y Claudia Lindgren. Ustedes pueden elegir el botón de interpretación que tiene la forma de un mapa mundial en la parte inferior de la pantalla en su aplicación de Zoom y seleccionar el idioma español. Si están usando un teléfono o una tableta pueden clicar en el icono para más y desde allí seleccionar la función de interpretación. Sépase que no hay servicios de interpretación para aquellos que llaman por medios telefónicos y no están usando la aplicación.
Gracias. Can we, specific instructions on how to participate in the meeting are located on the Board of Education webpage on the district's website, nvusd.org/Board. Can we please start with an attendance roll call from Bea Morales, Executive Assistant?
Yes, student board member, bit.
Present.
Trustee Gonzalez Mares.
Present.
Trustee Jankowicz.
Present.
Trustee Gracia.
Present.
Trustee Ricer.
Present.
Trustee Water. Trustee Shu.
Present.
Trustee Dooley.
Yeah.
Coram, present. Thank you.
Thank you, Bea. Thank you for joining us tonight for a Napa Valley Unified School District Board meeting. Public participation remains virtual, online only. This meeting tonight is in accordance with the open meeting rules in the state of California per Assembly Bill 361. I'm going to start tonight with some basic instructions on how we are going to be using Zoom and involve the members of the community. All Board of Education trustees and superintendent are in video throughout the entire board meeting from here in the boardroom. Other staff members are present by video. Members of the community will not be on video and will be muted except during public comment. During public comment, any member of the community that wishes to speak must raise their hand using the raise hand feature in Zoom. You will be unmuted and will be provided three minutes to speak. Instructions on how to raise your hand are available on the district's website at nvusd.org/Board. Okay, now going into. If I now may ask, Trustee Gracia to report on closed session items?
Yes, so in closed session, we discussed D1, Student Discipline. D1A1, the board recommends for the suspended expulsion for student 11182021A. And I'll move to approve.
Second.
First and a second, Bea, we could conduct roll call?
Yes, Trustee Gonzalez Mares.
I.
Trustee Jankowicz.
I.
Trustee Gracia.
I.
Trustee Ricer.
I.
Trustee Water.
I.
Trustee Shu.
I.
Trustee Dooley.
I.
Thank you.
D1A2, the board recommends for the suspended expulsion for student 11182021B.
I move to recommend.
Second.
First and a second, roll call?
Trustee Gonzalez Mares.
I.
Trustee Jankowicz.
I.
Trustee Gracia.
Nay.
Trustee Ricer.
I.
Trustee Water.
I.
Trustee Shu.
I.
Trustee Dooley.
I.
Thank you.
D1A3, the board recommends for the suspended expulsion for student 11182021C.
I move to recommend.
Second.
First and a second, roll call?
Trustee Gonzalez Mares.
I.
Trustee Jankowicz.
I.
Trustee Ricer, excuse me, Trustee Gracia.
Nay.
Trustee Ricer.
I.
Trustee Water.
I.
Trustee Shu.
I.
Trustee Dooley.
I.
Thank you.
D1A4, the board recommends for the suspended expulsion for student 11182021D. I'll move to approve.
A second.
First and a second, roll call?
Trustee Gonzalez Mares.
I.
Trustee Jankowicz.
I.
Trustee Gracia.
I.
Trustee Ricer.
I.
Trustee Water.
I.
Trustee Shu.
I.
Trustee Dooley.
I.
Thank you.
D1B, expulsions. D1B1, the board recommends for the expulsion for student 11182021E. Move to approve.
Second.
First and a second, roll call?
Trustee Gonzalez Mares.
I.
Trustee Jankowicz.
I.
Trustee Gracia.
I.
Trustee Ricer.
I.
Trustee Water.
I.
Trustee Shu.
I.
Trustee Dooley.
I.
Thank you.
D1B2, the board recommends for the expulsion for student 11182021F. Move to approve.
Second.
First and a second, roll call?
Trustee Gonzalez Mares.
I.
Trustee Jankowicz.
I.
Trustee Gracia.
I.
Trustee Ricer.
I.
Trustee Water.
I.
Trustee Shu.
I.
Trustee Dooley.
I.
Thank you.
D1B3, the board recommends for the expulsion for student 11182021G. Move to approve.
Second.
I have a first and a second, roll call, please?
Trustee Gonzalez Mares.
I.
Trustee Jankowicz.
I.
Trustee Gracia.
I.
Trustee Ricer.
I.
Trustee Water.
I.
Trustee Shu.
I.
Trustee Dooley.
I.
Thank you.
Item D2 Personnel. In closed session, the board took action to approve the following staff recommendations, effective November 19th, 2021. D2A1, Janine Burt to the position of Coordinator, Magnet School Project.
I have a first.
Second.
And we voted on that. We're just making an announcement. I'm sorry.
I said, I don't think we have to vote. We voted in closed.
We did. My apologies. Okay. Yeah, absolutely.
So, well, we want to welcome current Bel Air Principal, Ms. Janine Burt to this position of Director, or I'm sorry, Coordinator of the Magnet School Project. I think Ms. Burt is here and I'd love to just give her the opportunity. And we're very, very excited that she's going to be joining us down the road as part of the district leadership team, given her breadth and depth of expertise when it comes to magnet schools and magnet grant implementation. So she's a true gem in NVUSD when it comes to magnet schools. And can you promote her? Mr. Michaels?
Looks like she's rejoining. One second.
No problem.
Yes, I'm here.
Hi, Janine. Would you like to say anything?
I just wanted to say that I just really appreciate the board's support. I'm very, very excited to take on this new role. I, I just feel very privileged to continue the work that we've worked for this last, you know, 10 years or so in developing high-quality programs in our district. And I think when we had the opportunities to, to present at the Celebrating Schools event, you can see the diversity and programs that we have that are unique and provide different, different opportunities for students across our district and just very excited to be part of the team. And I'm very proud to represent Bel Air Park as well as our other current grantee magnet schools, Phillips Elementary and Willow. And just want to say thank you and I'm excited to be joining the team.
Welcome and congratulations.
Yes, we welcome you, Janine. And we are now moving to our next item, which is our flag salute. I've been going down the line here and now it is Trustee Jankowicz's turn. If you could lead us, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our next item is an announcement that this meeting is live streamed and recorded via Zoom and will be archived on the district YouTube channel. For a detailed review of any meeting agenda, the archived video can be referenced and located on the district webpage at nvusd.org. The public can join the virtual board meeting remotely via Zoom. Participation instructions and the process for public comment can be found on the district's webpage. We now move for approval of agenda.
Move to approve.
I have a first by Trustee Gracia, second. Second by Trustee Dooley. Student Board Rep.
I.
All those in favor?
I.
Opposed, abstained? Thank you. Next item is approval of minutes. So we have approval of the October 14 minutes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Wait, correct. We have a first by Trustee Gracia, a second by Trustee Dooley. Student Board Rep.
I.
All those in favor?
I.
And I think, Robin, you need to recuse yourself from the 10:14.
Oh, that's.
Okay, yeah, just speaking out of that. Thank you. All right. Next minute is 10:28.
Move to approve.
Second, first by Trustee Gracia, second by Trustee Water, Student Board Rep.
I.
Does our Student Board Rep need to recuse? Because I think that was our. Yeah, I think that was your one. Meaning.
Himena came.
Himena came.
Abstained, yeah.
Yeah, abstained. Okay. All right, all those in favor?
I.
Opposed, and we have one abstention from our Student Board Rep. And then approval minutes for November 4th.
Move to approve.
Second.
First by Trustee Gracia, second by Trustee Dooley, Student Board Rep.
I.
All those in favor?
I.
Opposed, abstained? Great, thank you. And recognition of visitors and employee organizations. Dr. Musetti, who do we welcome tonight?
I do not see any of our. Oh, wait, oh. Hold on one second. I've got a little bit of confusion here. They are not here this evening, so. They're not here tonight. All right. Thank you. So now we move to recognition of students of the month. So we are starting with American Canyon High School. Welcome Principal Lopez, please.
Good evening. Good evening, Dr. Musetti and the NVUSD School Board. Thank you once again for this opportunity to recognize our phenomenal students at American Canyon High School. Our first student of the month is Zachary Raymond. And I will read what two of Zachary's teachers wrote about him. Mr. Ike writes, "I would like to nominate Zachary Raymond. He is an extraordinary student and a delight to have in class each day. He is actively involved in all aspects of our campus, including academics and extracurricular activities. He takes academics very seriously and is earning grades of A+ in both AP Chemistry and AP Calculus, two of the hardest classes on our campus. Due to his hard work and determination, Zach has been inducted into both honors societies on our campus, the Mu Alpha Theta Math Honor Society and the National Honor Society. Zach comes to school each day with a positive attitude and has a wonderful sense of humor. I thoroughly appreciate ending each day with him in my sixth period class. While many students are tired and afraid to volunteer, he frequently volunteers to answer questions. He helps other students in my class and he stays after sometimes to make sure he understands the material each day. He is very deserving of student of the month and he is a role model for other students on our campus. He has made me very proud to be his teacher. And he was also nominated by Ms. Campway. And Ms. Campway says that Zach's level of writing and ability to help and collaborate with his peers to urge them towards their best selves is really something to watch. I think Zach is a classic American Canyon student. He really demonstrates all of our learning outcomes. Excellent written communication skills, critical thinking, oral communication skills, and collaboration. In addition, I was able to read some of Zach's personal essays he plans on using for college admittance and they were really something. He is tremendously self-aware and very funny." All right, Zach, congratulations.
Thank you. Um. You listen to part, when do I, am I supposed to say my thank you speech?
Right now.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, so before I go in and talk about myself, I'd just like to take a moment to thank my parents, my coaches, my teachers. Special thanks to Mr. Ike and Ms. Campway for nominating me, the school, and the district for allowing me to transfer in my freshman year. So a little bit about myself, I'm 16 years old and live with my sister Laurel, my mom, my dad, and two dogs. No cats because I'm allergic. Also, I lived in China for the first two years of my life before my parents adopted me and I've lived here ever since. My favorite school subjects are anything STEM-related. Last year, I'm proud to say I got a four on my AP Chem exam and earned good marks both semesters. I also took a few college classes at both Solano JC and NBC. I highly recommend personal money management. At the school in academics, I've been involved in several sports, swimming, wrestling, Taekwondo, and cross-country. Swimming and Taekwondo are my main sports. I started Taekwondo when I was four and after seven plus years of hard work and dedication, I was able to achieve my first degree black belt. I also joined swim team when I was 10, which turned out to be one of the best choices of my life. Six years later, I got to serve as an athlete representative on my team's membership board and fulfill one of the key positions on our team. As a senior of the class of 2022 at ACHS, my time has been filled with lots of good times, hard work, friendships. I still remember how nerve-wracking it was coming to school my first day freshman year. I barely knew anyone from the middle school and clung to my friends who also turned with me. I never run on a period system, so it was real fun trying to learn how to manage seven. I even went to the wrong period my first day. I sat in biology for five minutes until I realized I was supposed to be an avid. Now, three years later, I still went to the wrong period my first day of school because my English classes got changed. Those three years have been filled with memories. The game isn't added, my first robots competition, homecoming, high school swim relays, senior nights, duels, tournaments, and football games. One of my favorite more recent memories is with my math teacher, Mr. Ike. Always chit-chat after class about math or life or whatever. Um, but one day he got me into this card game called Magic, Magic the Gathering. Just recently, I started playing him and Magic every Thursday after school and I'm proudly announced that last week I beat him. Mr. Ike will complain that I only won because I used his cards and I should get my own, but a W isn't D. So I'm a senior. I'm also looking to the future. I've already applied to Cal Poly Slow and University of Pacific. And I plan to apply to five colleges, UC Davis, UC Berkeley, Irvine, Stanford, and University of Southern California. My dream in the near future is to get an acceptance letter into my dream school, Cal Poly Slow. I have to major in biomedical engineering, minor in mathematics. My ultimate goal is to take what I learned and then work as a prostheses engineer and revolutionize prosthetic devices to be cheaper and more accessible to people who need them. Once again, I'd like to say that it's an honor to receive this award and thank you for having me.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much, Zach. Our next student of the month, you are all very familiar with, it is our very own Emily Bit, student board member. Emily has been nominated by her leadership teacher, Ms. Harris. And Ms. Harris says that Emily has been a very active student on campus since her freshman year. She began as a freshman representative in leadership. Her sophomore and junior year, she served as her class president. And currently, as a senior, Emily is the school's ASB president. She is also part of various clubs on campus and serves as a member of Link Crew. In addition to leadership, Emily is very passionate about the environment. She is a member of Cool the Earth, Napa Climate Now, and served as the chapter president for Schools for Climate. She also is the chapter founder for the ACHS Youth Climate Action Coalition that is student-led and educates the public about our climate crisis. Emily also founded the EduEnviron Blogspot. It was initially a fun activity she started with friends, but it began to gain traction amongst eco-friendly businesses. She also presented at our staff professional development day and her session was titled Climate Change, Science, and What You, Your Students, and Parents Can Do About It Today. So congratulations, Emily. Very well deserved.
All right. Hi, everyone. So I first just wanted to start off by, of course, saying thank you so much for this incredible honor. A few weeks ago, I received a call slip to the principal's office during my fourth period and I was so nervous. I was thinking to myself, what could I possibly have done? But the anxiety subsided and I was just so shocked. I'm so grateful for the opportunity to be ACHS's student of the month for December. And I'd first like to start off by, of course, thanking my teachers, but my leadership teacher, Mrs. Harris, especially for nominating me. Um, if you ask me, one thing I would do a thousand times over and never regret out of my entire high school career, it would be choosing the leadership class to join my freshman year. I've been a leadership student for all four years of high school and it has truly been the most rewarding and impactful venture. Packing my high school memories with so many positive lessons and relationships and experiences. And really, I owe it all to Mrs. Harris. She fills our classroom with love and overflowing support. And even the days I dread coming to school for whatever reason, it becomes more bearable knowing that I have this safe space on campus. Ms. Harris has taught me so much these past four years, but the most important thing that I've learned from her is that I can and should be proud of my journey, even if I haven't arrived at my intended destination just yet. She inspires me to always try and find ways to improve my relationship with myself and to keep my chin up even when I fall. I've had the opportunity to grow up in her classroom and under her wing and for that I will always be grateful. I'd also like to thank my family, immediate and extended, because I could not have made it this far without them. I'm a teenager, which also means that I'm a handful, so I know it's not always easy to raise me. But I've been lucky enough to have two parents who do their best and support me in the ways that they can. I'm thankful for my mom, who I always turn to in times of need and who always picks me up when I'm down and encourages me to aim as high as I possibly can. And my dad, who has always been there to cheer me on from the sidelines, whether it's at my school's volleyball games, even though I wasn't really that good at induction ceremonies, science fairs, or even just important speeches. And then I also have two younger siblings and we fight all the time. But the bond that I share with them has truly shaped not only who I am, but how I view the world. I chose to apply to serve on this board for the same reason why I chose to run for ASB president and volunteer in my community and get involved in things and just about everything else. It's because I'm driven by a desire to help others. And I hope that right now I'm taking the steps in the right direction towards the school. But I, of course, cannot do it without the amazing support system that I have. So thank you so much again to my school's administration for this opportunity. I'm honored and I hope that I can live up to the title. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily.
Thank you, Principal Lopez, and congratulations to the American Canyon High School students of the month and our very own Emily Bit, our student board rep. All right, now we welcome Napa High School.
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Musetti and Board of Education, just for the opportunity to honor and celebrate our students this month. First up, we have Jimena Diaz, our NVUSD Napa High student of the month for November. She was nominated by a few teachers. First off is Ms. Viahoz. Jimena, she states Jimena is such a kind, hard-working, empathetic person. She is a role model for the whole class and has awesome values and shows them every day. She is an awesome student to have in class. Additionally, Mr. Aaron, her English teacher, states that just talk to Jimena for five minutes and you'll see why I think the world of this young woman. She's inquisitive, kind, tenacious, empathetic, and altruistic. In my 29 years of teaching, she is one of the very best listeners I've ever taught. I can't wait to see what Ms. Diaz does in the upcoming years. Our community here at Napa High School is blessed to have her on campus and it is truly an honor for being her teacher. And then finally, Ms. Andrela, her counselor, just shared that she's been able to get to know her through CSF and is impressed with how proactive she is within the club and in the meetings. And she's always working to check in with every member at each meeting and connect with people. In addition to all her work and all these incredible attributes, she's been a part of our orchestra for the past four years at Napa High School. She's maintained a 4.0 and above GPA throughout her high school career. She volunteers every year in the spring and summer with the Napa Wildlife Rescue and she is the secretary of CSF. So I present to you Jimena Diaz, Napa High, High School November student of the month. Is there a Jimena?
Yeah. Good evening. I'd like to begin by thanking my mom, who is the hardest worker I know and an amazing role model, as well as my aunts, who are always there to support me. I'd also like to thank all of my educators and my current principal, Dr. Ainsworth. My relationship with each and every one of them have shaped me into the person and student I am today. I'd like to thank the board, superintendent, and the attendees of this meeting for taking time to get to know me. It's truly such an honor. My educational journey in the Napa Valley Unified School District began when I was in the middle of second grade at Alta Heights in January 2012. My family and I had just moved to Napa from Belayo after my parents divorced and there were a lot of changes going on in my life. I was raised by my single mother who had a lot on her plate. My older brother. My older brother, Angel, has tuberous sclerosis and autism, so when my mom wasn't working, much of her attention went to my brother. I learned the value of self-sufficiency and knowing how to maximize my resources at a very young age. Because of my mom's busy work schedule and looking after my brother, I didn't have the option to engage in extracurricular activities growing up as much as I would have liked to. But I learned to love school. I excelled in the core subjects. And now in high school, I've taken numerous honors in AP classes each year. I take pride in my work, and I'm dedicated. I take pride in the work in time I've dedicated to my classes throughout the years. At Napa High, I'm grateful to have had the opportunity to get in touch with my passions through clubs and volunteering. I'm involved in Bring Change to Mind Climate Action Thursday Project, and I'm secretary of CSF. I played the violin since fourth grade. I'm in the Napa High string orchestra. I've been on the swim team for two years as well, and I volunteer weekly during the spring and summer seasons at Napa Wildlife Rescue. I learned so much from my experiences in each of these groups and in my involvement in them has truly become a highlight of my high school experience. As cliché as it sounds, life is moving fast. With call-up application deadlines around the corner, my days at Napa High are soon to be over. After high school, I hope to explore my interest in wildlife, animal biology, and chemistry sciences and get a bachelor's degree at a UC institution and then attend a medical grad school program or veterinary school. I look forward to being the first in my family to obtain a bachelor's degree, and I strive to use my education for good and to help others. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Jimena. Next up for us is our December Student of the Month at Napa High, and that is Carla Dominguez Gonzalez. Carla was nominated by Mr. King, who describes her as a fighter who is always up for an academic challenge and is never afraid to speak up and participate. Ms. Andrilla describes her, her counselor, as being very involved with Bring Change to Mind and mental health awareness on our campus and has made a tremendous impact within our community through that work. Carla is one of our spirit leaders. She's been involved in the dance program for the past four years and has been a spirit leader for the last two. She's been heavily involved in avid since the sixth grade and credits her avid family with much of her success. And then finally, one of her proudest achievements and involvement at Napa High and within the Napa community is her work with Bring Change to Mind, which is a club that is meant to work to destigmatize mental health illness in our community. And so I present to you Carla Dominguez.
Good evening. It's an honor to be here today, but first of all, let me thank my parents from all the sacrifices they've done to screaming my names in the audience, from all my performances and competitions. I couldn't have been here without them. I'd also like to thank Dr. Ainsworth for being the spirit leader's cheerleader, my avid teacher, Mr. King, for nominating me for this award. Your endless support has led me to where I am today, and I don't know what I'd do these past four years without you. I would also like to thank all my other teachers and coaches for their support. An important thing to know about me is that I am an immigrant. My parents left everything behind in Guanajuato, Mexico, and moved to a whole new country with a family of four in search of the American dream. Everything I do is to make them proud. Everything I do is to make them proud and think that we have found it. I knew nothing about this country. My first English teacher was Dora. I managed to learn English quickly and tested out of ELD in elementary school. I am proud to say that now I am passing classes like AP English with an A. I was told about my immigration status, and I was afraid. Afraid that college would be less of a reality for me. I have worked so hard and thought it would all go to waste because of where I was born. But if there's a will, there's a way. This year, I will proudly be applying to our nine schools and as many scholarships as I can get to get the chance to go to college. I would love to be able to attend UC Davis, but if we can't pay for it, I will be attending the JC and transferring. One of my passions is dance. I joined the dance department my freshman year and have been in all four years. I've been a spirit leader for the past two years, and this year I'm a captain. I love having a place to go to and feeling accepted. Ms. Johnson has created an amazing environment and has always supported me through everything, through all the ups and downs. I am also excited that we get to volunteer as a team. For example, we go to the veterans' home, and we are going to Boys and Girls Club. My other passion is mental health. I have dealt with mental health since a young age, and I have felt judged and alone, which has made it worse. This had made me a strong advocate for mental health. I want to lessen the stigma around it. Freshman year, I joined Bring Change to Mind. I became the co-president my sophomore year and continue that role as a senior. I am also in partnership with Mentis as a part of Teens Connect on their teens council, an advocate for mental health as well. I'm not sure what I will be majoring in in college, but I know I want to continue being an advocate for mental health and making sure everyone has access, no matter what their income may be. Thank you, school board, for all your opportunities. You have given me to continue my education in a safe space.
Congratulations. All right, bravo to our Napa High School Student of the Month. Thank you, Principal Ainsworth. All right. Before we continue, Dr. Masetti?
Yes, I'm so sorry. I was struggling there when we were recognizing our guests, and tonight we do have Ms. Leslie Walder is here, president of NAPS, and I'd like to give her the opportunity to greet the board.
Good evening. This is Leslie Walder, president of NAPS, and thank you so much, Dr. Masetti, President Gonzalez Maras, members of the Board of Trustees, student representative Bit. It's a pleasure to be here, and as I introduce myself tonight, I need to honestly acknowledge, this is the first time that I've done so following our students of the month. And I cannot convey in words how truly powerful what it is that you four brought to tonight's presentation mean. To have just a little bit of a glimpse into your lives and what you've experienced, what you've overcome, what you aspire to, and what you give, may it all come back to you in ten times. That's, I look forward to next week's break, but I just wanted to be able to honestly acknowledge from a place of sincere admiration, our amazing students. So thank you.
Well said, Ms. Walder, and thank you tonight for representing your employee organization and being present.
My pleasure.
A lot of nodding heads here, Ms. Walder, and maybe a couple of tears. Just, thank you. Beautifully said. Okay, we are now moving on to our reports, and we start with our Board of Education and student board rep. Please excuse me. I'm scrolling my screen a little too fast. I do need to go back, and it's public comment on non-agenda items. And I will ask trustee Gracia before we start if there are any comments on non-agenda items that were emailed to us.
There were no public comments received by electronic email at publiccomment@nvusd.org before 8:00 AM this morning.
Thank you, trustee Gracia. Public comment, this is the time when members of the audience may address the board on any school-related matter that is not on the agenda. The board will not take action on any issue raised during this section of the agenda, and as much as board action is limited to posted agenda items. Speakers are requested to limit their comments to a maximum of three minutes. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment tonight?
There is no public comment for non-agenda items.
Thank you, Mr. Michaels. Seeing that there's no public comment on non-agenda items, we will now move forward to reports and begin with our Board of Education and student board rep. Would you like to start us tonight?
So I don't really have much to report for this meeting. Recently, I've just been up to college applications and trying to get that in before the deadline. But yeah, that's it for me.
That's right. You're busy. A lot of seniors are busy, busy. All right, who'd like to start from the board? Trustee Gracia?
No problem. On October 19th, I supported SMS Silver Middle School, but their dine and donate by eating at Allegria, and then on the 26th, I visited Vintage High School. The 29th, I attended the big game. Congratulations to all who had a hand in pulling that off. It was very well done. On the 2nd of November, I met with the president and superintendent of Pope Valley ahead of my CSBA delegate assembly meeting. On the 3rd, I met with a concerned AMCAN parent. On the 9th, I attended the facilities and technology meeting. And then on the 17th, I attended the curriculum meeting.
I attended the 16th Annual High School Breakfast hosted by Napa Valley College. I went to the facilities and technology committee meeting, which we will be reporting on later, and I participated in the dine and donate at Gottes for the Napa Valley Ed Foundation.
Okay. On October 15th, I attended the NVUSD Virtual Professional Development Conference, which was just an amazing experience. So shout out to the instruction division and all the hard work that went into putting that together and the incredible offerings, particularly the incredible inspiring keynote speaker, Dr. Victor Rios. And then another shout out for our director of special education, Terry Lynn Rissetti. I attended her session on modifications for teachers in general education classrooms for inclusion of special ed students. And also a social emotional learning for secondary teachers and a session on understanding the strengths and difficulties questionnaire. On October 18th, along with trustees Chu and Water, I did a site visit for Napa Valley Independent Studies. So many thanks to Principal Cisneros and also Director Drew Heron, who really gave us some good insight into the independent studies option that we have available here for our students. On October 18th, I attended a special education community advisory committee meeting. On the October 25th, trustee Chu and I visited McPherson Elementary School. Many thanks to Principal Troy Knox. That was a great experience. We visited their spooky Halloween garden that the sixth graders set up for the younger kids to tour. Also on that day, trustee Chu and I visited Willow Elementary. Many thanks for the welcome from Principal Pam Perkins. On October 26th, I participated in the City of American Canyon Two by Two Committee Meeting. On October 26th, I also listened in on the middle school redesign informational session for our families. On October 29th, I did two more site visits with trustee Chu. We were very busy bees that week. We visited Brown's Valley Elementary School, so thank you to Principal Frank Silva, and then also Shear Elementary School. Many thanks to Principal Brian Gardner for showing us around and giving us glimpses into how, you know, what makes your schools tick and what makes them special and beautiful. On the 29th, I also attended the 50th Big Game. I really enjoyed that experience. On November 12th, I, along with trustee Chu, met with the presidents of the American Canyon Parent Teacher Organizations for Donaldson Way, Napa Junction, Canyon Oaks, and ACMS. And I'm just really grateful for the parents' commitment to their children and their children's schools and all the amazing things that they do on a volunteer basis to contribute to the school and the community. On November 15th, I had another special ed community advisory committee meeting, which I'll report on later. On November 17th was the board advisory meeting for curriculum and student support. And then also, I guess that was last night, last night also I listened to, maybe it was Tuesday night, listened to the Napa County Office of Education offered webinar with Dr. Karen Verlucio and Dr. Carrillo, I think was his name, a pediatrician from Harvest Pediatrics. That was a community service informational session to explain the COVID vaccine for the new age group that's been approved, kids five to 11, and answer any questions from parents and community members. I was really grateful that we had that information service to answer questions and help parents feel comfortable moving ahead with getting their children vaccinated. And this concludes my report.
All right. Well, let's see. On October 18th, I visited Napa Valley Independent Studies with my two colleagues here. And after that, I shot off to Phillips and had a very enjoyable visit and noted that the the children are really appreciating the salad bar. Okay, they were really very excited about what was available for lunch that day. And then on the, oh, on the 29th, I had a meeting here, and then I went outside and saw the Napa High School band being there, you know, their routine marching around the grounds, and it was, it was really a lot of fun. And then I went to with, with, let's see, on the, I'm kind of on the 8th, I went to New Tech High School and visited with Susan Miller, who is one of my old teacher colleagues. On the night with superintendent, excuse me, trustee Gracia, I went to Stonebridge School, and it was really fun watching the kids out there playing in the rain. And it was very enjoyable. And I also, just this past Monday, visited at Napa High. Tomorrow, I'm heading out to our beautiful new elementary school at American Canyon. And I too watched the Napa County Office of Education-sponsored talk on children's vaccinations. And I also watched a webinar from UCSF on the same subject last week. I also attended the Napa Valley College Virtual Breakfast and was extremely impressed with what they are offering our students who move on to the college. It was really, it was great. That's my report.
So I visited all of the schools with trustee Reiser. Thank you so much to all the principals for giving us the time to do that. I know it's a very tough year, so really appreciate that availability. I also attended several district meetings, including the professional development day on the 15th of October, ACHS Community Information Session on October 19th, and the middle school redesign information session on October 26th. I also attended the American Canyon City Council and Staff Meeting on the 26th, which I'll report on later. And I also did some community engagement mainly to meet with band booster representatives and also with the American Canyon PTO, PTA presidents along with trustee Reiser. And I just have to say that it is an incredibly difficult and different year for them to be doing all the fundraising that they are still doing. And I'm really, really grateful for the fact that they're still able to do that and willing to make the adjustments that are needed. At Canyon Oaks, which I met one of the parents, they did a fundraiser. They exceeded their target by $20,000, which is wonderful. And part of that went to pay for a virtual steam night for any family that wanted it from the school, which is happening this week. So, you know, these parents are just amazing, and they're just so dedicated and so generous with not only their time, but their money. So I really want to give a shout out to all of the parent clubs and boosters out there, and that concludes my report.
So on October 19th, I too attended the ACHS Community Information Meeting. On the 26th, I observed the middle school redesign information session. On the 29th, I too attended the big game, and I the football was great and all, but as a former band member and drum major, I was very impressed with both the schools' bands. They had a drum line competition pregame, which I was sitting close to, so we got to watch. And then they both have very unique styles as marching bands and different from each other, but both really well rehearsed and well, well-composed. And so I was very impressed with the bands. Great job. It's a big stage for them as well. And then on the 9th of November, I attended the Facilities and Technology Committee Meeting, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Trustee Dooley. I too went to the big game and I took my dad with me and he had so much fun. And, and we just, it was just really felt very community and it just felt like a happy place. It just was just a lot of fun to, to be there. I attended, along with Dr. Mercedes, the two tours of the new Unidos Middle School on November sixth and November eleventh. And it was on that Saturday, on a Saturday, a packed room. And that moment where you're like, okay, we need to bring out extra chairs. And so a lot of engagement as well. We had an opportunity and I had an opportunity to talk to many parents with their questions. And, and also the students got a chance to take a tour as well. And I also want to thank our middle school for hosting that and in their campus and to welcome many of our community families and students to walk through that campus, especially for the students. And as Principal Oribé asked them to just imagine what their day would be like around the campus. And so that was pretty exciting to see that. And, and on November eleventh, which was also a day with no school, there's still a lot of parents and a lot of the kiddos touring the campus. And so we had, again, to kind of look at making sure that we were being able to seat everybody and receive the information that was, was being provided that day. So participated in that. And that being said, that looks like it concludes this part of our report. So now I'm going to go to Board Representative Reports, starting with Curriculum and Student Support Committee.
Okay, well, I'm reporting out that it's the committee that Trustees Garcia and Reiser and I attend. And this was yesterday and was quite the agenda and we managed to keep it to two hours. And I'm going to be really quick because we're going to be discussing a lot of this. This is going to be presented in a board meeting, but also I'll rush through. We talked about the STAR assessment and it's an excellent tool to check effectiveness of instruction. It can be administered at any time and, you know, we're cautioned, we need to keep remembering that our children's instruction was interrupted, you know, with the pandemic. And the results actually are similar statewide. We're embedding the author series into instruction. You know, we're promoting those books and staff is getting ongoing training. ELO, the focus is on professional development. Principals are doing learning walks and getting feedback. And let's see, I didn't have time to type this up, folks. And I really do have terrible handwriting. I have to say that. And, okay, principals are very, very involved in this. We do have a big focus on math. And we pointed out that they talked about, you know, homework clubs and the libraries have extended hours and to make sure content person is in the room to help the students. We are vertically aligning math priority standards. And, oh, the homework club is an intervention, sorry. And, and basically, you know, we did our usual, our ritualistic concern about how much reading the kids are doing. You know, this is, this is turning into sort of, it's like a folk way. You know, it's like an anthropological, you know, marker. You know, we have to go through this. But, you know, just speaking as an old teacher, I'll tell you, it's, you know, gaming. This, I mean, it all has a lot to do with it. We're doing our best. And that recognizing that, you know, we need to be increasing. And let's see. Focus has been, in the middle schools, a big focus on math. And Mrs. Reddy discussed that with us. She'll be telling us more about it tonight. And let's see. Let's see. Oh, yes. Mrs. Reiser said, I do have a concern about the amount of reading that's assigned. I mean, we really, we are really, you can talk about math and we'll start talking about reading. I mean, this is, this is what we do. Okay, and they have four-week data cycles. And they are expectations. Okay, we talked about, we talked about early grades and how a lot of this is developmental and et cetera, et cetera. But we'll be hearing more about it tonight. We discussed our secondary social and emotional learning. We had an update on that. And there'll be a more detailed report on this in January. We are embedding, we want to, we discussed embedding SEL into the literature. We talked about a service learning project, education around healthy relationships, and recognize that integrating for secondary students, integrating SEL into the curriculum is the way to go. And let's see, we talked about the math pathway. And, you know, there's a, which we will be talking about tonight, that there was a lot of interest in the summer school program and how you could do the accelerated program, how students, how students have a way to get into the more advanced classes and how the summer school program, the summer bridge program can help that. And let's see, there's classes in, there were classes in pre-calc, data, statistics for social justice, probability and statistics and financial algebra. And let's see, English learner, okay. There is a, we are continuing our work with West Ed and we're going to be having a report on this later on this, this winter. And we talked about the sped, special ed. Our consultant has been looking at one hundred documents, contracts, agreements, and is extremely pleased with the progress that we've made in this. And there will be another report later, again, later on this, later on this winter. And, oh, we're going to have a final report in January. And I believe one of us, it had to be you, David, I wrote pleasantly surprised by the work that is being done. And, and you talked about how, oh, no, we had a teacher call in. Evan Versini called in and said that the middle school students at his, at his school do have, there is an emphasis on reading. I think, I think, you know, you know, our comments have had some results. And I think the pandemic has a lot to do with it too. But they have dedicated SSR time. And he personally has been reading more than he did last year. And that's it. That's it. How's that? Is that good enough? Since a lot of this is going to be talked about later on tonight.
Thank you, Trustee Water.
Okay, we're now going on to Facilities and Technology Committee.
Jamie King from King and Associates, with support from Kelly Jurgensen from Bampelt, presented on the complexities of school funding and reviewed the state school facility program. Over forty-two billion in capital has been allocated to facilities funding and the process is administered by the Office of Public School Construction. Why is it so complicated? You need multiple public agency approvals. Timeline can be anywhere from forty-eight years. Engaging with experts helps expedite the process and the complexities. And there are frequent regulatory changes, including the critical eligibility issue. There are multiple funding mechanisms and opportunities. I won't list them all, but think new construction, modernization, seismic mitigation list continues. We reviewed the Measure H timeline and the construction phases. And Ms. King broke down the state funding application process and percentage of time resources dedicated to each section of the process. We currently have twenty-six submitted applications for our modernization plans. NVUSD works with our facilities partners to leverage our facilities dollars. Future funding for our projects are dependent on state taxpayers, but we can't pursue funding unless we have matching funds at the local level. It is a match program and it underpins the importance of facilities funding, expert partners, and the prioritization and importance of our physical sites. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Now going on to Finance Committee.
We have not met.
Okay. Policy Committee.
We have not met either.
Special Education.
Well, to make up for that, we met twice since our last meeting. So October eighteenth and November fifteenth were the two Community Advisory Committee Meetings for Special Education. And just as a reminder for community members who may be listening, they were trying to increase sort of accessibility for this resource. It's really a resource for parents of special education students. It's a great place to sort of connect with other parents, to connect with the service providers within the district and the county within the SALPA. It's really a supportive atmosphere. Meetings used to be during the day, during, you know, the earlier afternoon and now they're moved to 5:30 PM. And they are still offered virtually via Zoom with simultaneous translation into Spanish. So if you are listening and you're a parent of a special education student, please do consider participating in these meetings. They're very interesting and chock full of information and resources. So we heard from Ginny Maywald, who is the SALPA Director. And she gave us an update about the professional development that they're offering in the region lately focused on how best to respond to trauma, which I think is responsive to the pandemic conditions that students and all of us have been contending with, as well as how to better support English learner special ed students. And those are kind of focused on school psychologists, teachers, and speech and language pathologists. We heard about a really exciting partnership with Parents Can. The Director, Marlena Garcia, described she's working along with the SALPA to create, it's really a great way to sort of maximize access to resources. They're creating a video, a library of informational videos that are going to be available online on various topics like, you know, the, just different things that would impact parents of special ed students. And so that's a really exciting project that's ongoing right now. They're working with the California Department of Education, looking at different formats, having links embedded in those videos that would lead parents to, you know, other websites and informational resources. Then we heard also from our NVUSD Director of Special Education, Teri Lynn Rosetti. She did talk about what Trustee Water mentioned, which is the progress being made here in our district with the implementation of the FICMAT recommendations. We brought in the independent consultant to really give a sort of a slightly, an outsider perspective and more, you know, objective perspective on what has been completed and what's next. And she was really positive about that experience and saying that it was really helpful to have that additional support in moving forward with those, with those recommendations. And then we heard from the co-chairs, the parent co-chairs of the committee. They're Darcy Storms and Amy Barberi. And I just want to commend their commitment and the hard work that they put in for, on behalf of their students, their children, but also really connecting other parents with resources and working with their school districts to advocate for special education students. And they said really that their focus this year, they're prioritizing focusing on inclusion. And then that brings me to the last point for my update, which is that they are just starting work on the Inclusion Awards, which is an annual thing sponsored by this committee. And last year was the first year that they did kind of a multimedia contest as opposed to just a poster contest. And you might remember that in May, we had that wonderful video presentation. And they were saying, oh, maybe it was too long. Maybe we should cut it by a few minutes. And I piped up and said, please don't cut it. I can't think of any part of that twelve minutes that I wouldn't have wanted to see. And it's really nice to have those experiences of really hearing from students and hearing from teachers and being inspired by parents who are really active volunteers and teachers who are really making such profound differences in kids' lives. So we have that to look forward to again next May. But they're working on the theme for it. Last year was Be The One. So there, if anyone has a brilliant idea about a catchy slogan about inclusivity, feel free to let me know and I'll pass it along. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Trustee Reiser. City of American Canyon liaison representatives. Yes, we met on October twenty-sixth. And the main theme, topic that we talked about was the current memorandum of understanding. And we think that we need to get a little bit more clarity on a few of the items because in June of next year, the city will have paid off their loan debt related to the billing of their portion of part of the middle school from thirty-five years ago. So we actually directed staff to go back and take a look at it in depth and see how it should be incorporated into whatever future agreements we have. So that concludes our report.
Thank you. City of Napa liaison representatives. Have not yet met. Great. All right. Town of Yountville.
Yes, it's been nearly ten months since last we met.
Thank you, Trustee Garcia. Now we're on to Superintendent and Executive Staff.
Yes, good evening, NVUSD Trustees, staff and community. So tonight, I want to start out by sharing with pride and enthusiasm that last weekend, I attended the Napa Valley Band Reserve Event that was on pause for a couple of years due to the pandemic. It was hosted by our own American Canyon High School marching band at Memorial Stadium. I got to see dozens of high school marching bands and color guards from across the Northern California region perform. And most importantly, it was amazing how the groups supported one another with lots of cheering, smiling and high fives. It was great to be out there demonstrating support for one of our premier performing arts groups. The ACH Band and Color Guard are a small but very mighty group that closed out the evening with an energetic and vibrant performance as the local host band. I also got to present the Superintendent's Award, which was giant, by the way, to the winning band, which was Saratoga High School. So congratulations to Saratoga for bringing their talent and energy to the valley this last weekend. I'd also like to just take a brief moment to once again recognize and thank the Napa Valley Community Foundation. They continue to demonstrate unwavering support for our AVID programs across the district with numerous grants. NVUSD received from them a $5,500 grant from the Oakville Fund and an anonymous donor, and a $15,000 grant recently from the Cleanse Family Fund. So again, we want to thank this community partner, which has provided ongoing support for the AVID program, which in turn supports thousands of our NVUSD students in accessing programming that positions them to pursue better post-secondary opportunities related to both college and career. Given that this is our last board meeting in November, I think it's important to deliver a brief message of gratitude this evening. Thanksgiving is, of course, one of my favorite holidays. It's a time for family gatherings, really good food, and a kickoff to the holiday season, and my birthday's in there too. It's also a time to give thanks. And for me, this year has been one of much reflection and gratitude after pushing through the unanticipated personal and professional challenges. It is with this in mind that I want to express appreciation to all the people at the Napa Valley Unified School District and our broader community who support our district's mission of transforming lives by instilling and inspiring lifelong learning in every student. To our students in NVUSD, I want you to know that as Superintendent, I'm continually inspired by your imagination, resolve and caring spirit. We saw that in Emily tonight and her three colleagues who were honored as Students of the Month. You are critical thinkers and creative problem solvers. I know this year's been hard for you as students in the classroom, but it has been such a joy to see you back in school. To our NVUSD district leaders, site administrators, teachers and support staff, I'm grateful for the perseverance and professionalism you have shown time and time again. And I'm honored to be working alongside each one of you. You've brought your energy, ingenuity and positive attitude. You've brought your energy, ingenuity and positive attitude to all that you do, and it really has made a difference in these difficult times. To our N V U S D parents and families, thank you for having faith in the Napa Valley Unified School District to teach and guide your students to whom we dedicate our profession and expertise every day. Your support at home is so important. We appreciate your partnership. And finally, I want to thank the seven board members in the boardroom tonight for their courageous, steady governance and leadership as we advance our board annual priorities, our more long-term strategic plan goals and the large-scale improvements that we are dedicated to making for current and future N V U S D students. So lots of gratitude. With that, I'm going to turn it over to my assistant superintendents, and we are going to start off with Assistant Superintendent Rob Manguala of Business Services.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to update the board and the community. November brings lots of work to the business office. We're in the process of finalizing our first update to our budget referred to as first interim. Ever since the beginning of the COVID pandemic, there have been a great deal of uncertainty, especially related to finance. Revenues at the state level continue to far exceed expectations, yet declining enrollment and dramatically reduced attendance rates are creating substantially reduced revenue outlooks for most school districts. Inflation is running at a rate not seen since the nineteen eighties, which is increasing the cost of goods and services. This means that school districts will have greater costs, especially due to labor, which is the largest portion of school district expenses. Labor shortages are being felt across the economy. The shortage of employees is being referred to as the Great Resignation, which by all accounts is dramatically picking up steam. We're hoping that when the governor's budget comes out in January, that we'll see a package that addresses declining enrollment and a healthy cola to offset inflation. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Manguala. And now turn it over to Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, Miss Dana Page.
Hi, good evening, President Gonzalez Morris, Board of Trustees, Dr. Masetti and Student Board Representative Bit. First, I would like to share some progress on efforts led by Gina DeLuca to continue to protect students and staff from the COVID nineteen exposure. As coming up on December first, by then, all sixteen N V U S D elementary school sites will be participating in COVID nineteen testing every week. This is an optional opt-in opportunity that requires individual or parent consent. Individuals may opt in each week. As a result, the program continues to grow in numbers. It's a pooled program in which we test a group of students and staff. And then if there's a positive result, then we drill down and do individual tests. The testing is provided by C D P H-approved vendor Concentric Gingo BioWorks, and the program is offered to N V U S D at no cost for the twenty one twenty two school year. It requires very little effort or involvement on the part of the school staff, and it's done really quickly, no more than five minutes per classroom. So we're not taking away instructional time. To date, we have over thirteen hundred elementary students participating in weekly testing and over a hundred seventy five employees, and that continues to grow. Also, under Strategic Plan Goal two point one C, celebrating staff contributions throughout the district, I'm very excited to announce the process for nominating Teachers of the Year for the County has changed, and it now allows us the opportunity to first run a nomination and selection process to name our very own N V U S D Teachers of the Year. These honorees will then become the candidates who will advance to the County Teacher of the Year selection process. This has been really a long time coming change. I'm super excited about it. We will be selecting five N V U S D Teachers of the Year. They can be in any grade level or subject matter in general or special education. They must be fully credentialed, full-time teachers with at least eight years of teaching experience prior to this year. All finalists and the five Teachers of the Year will be celebrated at an evening awards ceremony on January twenty fifth. And although they won't be moving on to the county level, we are also going to be selecting certified nurse and counselor to also be honored. And then all of our nominees will be celebrated at this event on January twenty fifth alongside our classified employees of the year who were named last spring. So it'll just be a big event to celebrate all our wonderful, talented N V U S D employees. The nomination process is easy. There's a short form, which we have been pushing out via email, parent and staff newsletters and Parent Square, and nominations are due at the school site by December third. We look forward to reading the submissions from nominators and celebrating our outstanding N V U S D staff. And tonight I would just like to conclude by wishing everyone a very happy Thanksgiving. Enjoy your time to unwind, feast with family and friends, and reflect in gratitude. Thank you.
To Miss Page. Next up is Assistant Superintendent Ms. Pat Andrew Jennings, who oversees the Instructional Services Division.
Thank you, Dr. Masetti. Good evening, President Gonzalez Morris, Board Trustees, Student Board Representative Bit, Doctor and N V U S D community. The Instructional Services Division continues to be busy addressing the key district strategic initiatives. In relation to Board Annual Priority Number Three, which is robust communication, the new elementary report card was published to parents yesterday. Parents are now able to access the report card online and view their students' progress. The newly designed report card provides much more clarity for parents about their child's progress. A companion document and video tutorial was shared with all parents and is now available on the N V U S D website. In our efforts to address Board Annual Priority Number One, which you'll hear more about later on this evening, which is focused on the redesign of our middle schools, the months of October, November have been incredibly busy. We launched open enrollment with a joint middle school webinar for families. And additionally, N V U S D middle schools have hosted webinars, school tours and question and answer sessions. Collectively, we have hosted tours for over four hundred families at American Canyon Middle School, Redwood, Silverado and Unidos. We look forward to sharing upcoming opportunities to welcome our students at their new school sites. More details will be available in December and January. You will hear more about our middle school work, as I said, in our presentation later this evening. In support of Board Annual Priority Number Three, which is focused on improving our TK math programming, the secondary math pathway committee met over six weeks to review and revise the six twelve math pathway with two goals in mind. One was to create expanded and flexible pathways for students to accelerate when and if they are ready, as well as as well as expanded math course offerings during the third and fourth year of high school. We have provided through these new pathways, ways for students to accelerate their math learning at various points and allow students to take AP calculus or a calculus at Napa Valley College before graduating high school. Also, a data science, science and an additional statistics course will also be offered as a third and fourth year, third or fourth year math course offering. And more information regarding these changes will be provided to students, staff and families as we approach registration in the spring. Thank you. That concludes my report and everyone wishing everyone a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. And next and last, we have Mr. Mike Pearson, Assistant Superintendent of Operational Services.
Good evening, President Gonzalez Morris, N V U S D Board of Education Trustees, Dr. Masetti, Student Board Representative Emily Bit, members of the N V U S D community. Thank you for the opportunity to provide you each of you with an update from the N V U S D Operational Services. Tonight, I'm actually going to speak about all the departments that comprise operations in N V U S D. Most of my comments support Strategic Plan Goal Number Four, but we are surprising you with the support of another goal I'll share in just a moment. Then the two thousand twenty one twenty two fit assessment has been completed and shared with the Instructional Services Department to complete a portion of the school accountability report card. As you know, N V U S D staff took over the task of completing the fit, which is a visual inspection at one point in time of school facilities. The focus of the inspection is on classrooms and other spaces students frequent. Our process to date, which has proved to be very successful, involves inspecting sites in April and May, submitting work orders to address deficiencies over June and July, then conducting another assessment in September, followed up by the submission of any additional work orders to help our schools achieve the highest level of good repair. I'm happy to report that all of our school sites achieved a score of ninety percent or higher on the fit. I want to commend the entire Maintenance and Grounds Department for their hard work and commitment, and specifically mention the leadership of Albert De Souza, Director of Maintenance and Grounds, along with Brian Bassinet, who monitors the fit assessment. Two weeks ago, Maintenance and Grounds welcomed our first student intern from New Tech High School, and this is where we're supporting Strategic Plan Goal Number One. We had embarked on developing a student internship program in the fall of twenty nineteen, but when the pandemic started, our internship program had to be shelved. Our current student intern is shattering employees from our H V A C department, and we hope to bring on more student interns throughout the twenty one twenty two school year, along with offering paid internships to students interested over the summer. Additionally, we are closely working, working closely with the leadership from Napa Valley Adult School to offer similar internship to students from the adult school. In custodial and operations, recently, the head custodians from the middle schools and high schools completed a two-day training program with Lori Aguirre, who's the Director of Operations. Highlights from the two-day Train the Trainer Program, which was led by a certified master custodial trainer, included learning about cleaning processes, adult learning styles, developing training agendas, and also public speaking, which included a presentation by each participant they had to give. And some of the participants actually gave their presentation in Spanish, which was great. In addition to this training, the custodial staff participated in morning and in a morning training on Friday, October fifteenth, which is the School District Professional Learning Day. Staff from our Plumbing Department trained custodians on the proper use of a hand auger, along with other items such as learning how to locate shut-off valves and what tools to use to shut off gas and water if necessary. In the future, operations plans to build upon the successful collaborative partnership with maintenance to provide future training. In Transportation, the Director of Transportation, Terry Guzman, and Assistant Director of Transportation, Justin Binion, have been working collaboratively with the Instructional Services on setting bell schedules for the twenty twenty three school year, twenty two twenty three school year, excuse me. And Mr. Guzman and Mr. Binion have also played an active role in planning transportation routes for the twenty two twenty three school year, specifically for middle schools. And finally, I'm happy but sad to report that after many years in this school district overseeing our transportation department, Terry Guzman will be retiring at the end of December. Mr. Guzman has done this magnificent job overseeing transportation, and his leadership will be sorely missed. With Food Service, every month, Food Service has been celebrating a fruit or a vegetable to increase student and staff awareness. These items are also highlighted as part of the menu offerings for students and staff. The harvest of the month for November has been pomegranates, and the harvest of the month for December will be cauliflower. Director of Food Service, Kristen Teckel, has worked very hard this year to ensure all school sites are offering breakfasts to for all of our students. And by Monday, November twenty ninth, the last school site will come on board with serving breakfasts to students in N V U S D. That means all of our schools will be offering breakfasts to students here in N V U S D. And tomorrow, all students will be receiving a very traditional Thanksgiving meal for for lunch. Students will have fresh roasted turkey, mashed potatoes, gravy, green beans, cranberry sauce, a roll and a churro, which we are very excited to offer. The Food Service staff has worked extremely hard to provide this meal since it is involved in multiple steps. And finally, I am also very pleased to report that through the Unigil's meals offering for all students, N V U S D has seen an increase in the number of students eating lunch and breakfast at our school sites. Specifically, we have seen a twenty percent increase in student participation when we when we compare meals claimed in twenty nineteen to meals claimed in twenty twenty one. We did not include the twenty twenty since that was during the pandemic. This is extremely encouraging to know that N V U S D students is able to feed many more students than previously. And finally, with facilities, the facility team has started planning spring and summer projects, as you will see from some of the board items on tonight's agenda. We are very excited to be able to move these projects forward in a very timely manner. Testing locations for COVID nineteen that are open to N V U S D employees and community members have been established in two locations. First one is at the N V U S D District Office, and the second location is at the former Napa Junction Elementary School Site. Testing occurs daily from Monday through Monday through Fridays. And vaccination centers continue to be offered at N V U S D school sites. On that note, tomorrow, a vaccination clinic will be offered at the Napa High School Cafeteria from four to six P M. And to give you a little bit of data on the vaccination, we've had on November third, we had a hundred and eight individuals receive the COVID nineteen vaccination. And on November tenth, at American Canyon High School, we had two hundred and eighteen people received the COVID vaccination. So a pretty good turnout on that. And then finally, I would also like to wish everybody a very happy Thanksgiving and a wonderful week week away from work and enjoy the holidays. Thank you. And that concludes our report.
Thank you. Just for the record, I'm saying very thankful for the four assistant superintendents who oversee their respective divisions. So thank you, Assistant Superintendents. I conclude staff reports, President Gonzalez, so again, happy Thanksgiving from my team.
And happy Thanksgiving back to you all. A lot of, again, nodding heads here and wishing you all a fantastic Thanksgiving. Okay, we are now moving to the next item of our agenda, and that's the Approval of Consent Agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a first and a second. Do I have any public comment on consent agenda items, Mr. Michaels?
We do not have any a public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Michaels. We could conduct a roll call.
Yes, Student Board Member Bit.
I.
Trustee Gonzalez Morris.
I.
Trustee Jankowicz.
I.
Trustee Gracia.
I.
Trustee Riser.
I.
Trustee Water.
I.
Trustee Shu.
I.
Trustee Dooley.
I.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vera. We now move forward to item J of our agenda, and this includes presentations and discussion items. So we'll start with Business Services Fall twenty twenty one Star Assessments Baseline Data.
Great. Hello, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Okay, great. Let me just share my screen. All right. Good evening, President Gonzalez Morris, Trustees, Dr. Masetti and Student Board Member Bit. This is now our second year administering the STAR assessments to students in our district, and I'm thankful for the opportunity to share the baseline results from our Fall twenty twenty one STAR screening window. After I present the data, my colleagues from Instructional Services will speak to the implications of the data on their division's work. Our district work around assessments falls under our Strategic Plan Goal Number One, Student Learning Achievement and Access. Specifically, it falls under the College and Career Readiness Initiative and the tactic describing the development of a robust and balanced assessment system. Additionally, the STAR assessments provide a key data point in support of Annual Board Priority Number Two, the development of a multi-tiered system of support. STAR assessments are quick and can be administered any time of year, even outside of our formal assessment windows, making this an excellent tool for determining the effectiveness of academic interventions throughout the school year. Before we look closely at the Fall twenty twenty one data, I'd like to take a moment to remind the board and the community about some of the key data points that we looked at in the past, and we'll revisit this evening. First, the scaled score. Students who take a STAR assessment are given a skills score based on the number of questions answered correctly and the difficulty of those questions, and allows us to compare student progress over time and across the grade levels. Next, we have the percentile ranked. Students are given a percentile rank indicating the percentage of other students nationally who obtain scores equal to or lower than that of the particular student. For example, a student in the thirty fifth percentile in STAR reading performed better than thirty five percent of students nationally in the same grade level as that student that took the assessment at that same time of year. Renaissance categorizes students based on their percentile rank. Students who score better than forty percent of students nationally in their grade level at that time of the school year are considered at or above benchmark. There are four total categories ranging from at or above benchmark all the way to those in need of urgent intervention who are scoring below the tenth percentile rank. Remember that students are expected to earn a higher and higher scale score as they progress through their learning. For example, an eighth grader who took the STAR math test in the fall needs a scale score of ten seventy eight to be at or above benchmark. And that minimum scaled score increases over time, and by the time that eighth grader takes the test in the spring, they will need a scale score of ten ninety four. I'd also like to take a moment to review which students take which assessments. Students in grades three through twelve take the STAR reading test. Students in grades kindergarten through second grade will take the STAR early literacy test until their reading skills develop enough that they can be reliably assessed with STAR reading. And typically, this transition happens in grade two. Students in grades one through one through twelve take the STAR math test. I'd like to take a moment and celebrate all of our teachers and site administrators for their extraordinary work in administering the STAR assessments this fall. As you can see, our school's participation rates were well into the nineties despite the challenges of the ongoing pandemic. What you see on this and the following slides is our new Fall twenty twenty one baseline data. We are excited to have STAR data that we know has been reliably administered in a classroom under the supervision of a teacher, and that moving forward, we can reliably compare data points from multiple screening windows. Here we have the proficiency rates for STAR early literacy for kindergarten and first grade. What you see are the percentages of students who scored at or above benchmark during the fall screening window. Second grade is usually the transition year for students as they graduate from STAR four hundred forty six students with reading abilities strong enough to take STAR reading, while six hundred thirty five of our second graders are still emerging as readers and took STAR early literacy. It is important to remember that these second graders have not had full days of in-person learning since March twenty It is important to remember that these second graders have not had full days of in-person learning since March twenty twenty, when they were in kindergarten. We expect the number of students taking STAR early literacy to decrease while the number of students taking STAR reading to increase over the course of the school year. And it's to be expected that the proficiency rate for second graders in STAR early literacy would be lower than the proficiency rate of second graders taking STAR reading, simply based on the ability levels of the students taking each test. Our strong readers taking STAR STAR reading while those taking STAR early literacy are still developing their skills. These are the elementary reading proficiency rates, and the sixth graders that you see here are the ones who are currently attending our K six schools this year. Here we have the proficiency rates for the middle schools and for the high schools. We now switch over to the STAR math assessment. These are the proficiency rates for the elementary students. And again, the sixth graders that you see here are the ones that are currently attending our K six elementary schools. And when we first saw this data, we noticed that the downward trend that you see and looked up the math CASP data for the state of California from two thousand nineteen, which would have been the last time that we took it before the pandemic. Interestingly, we see a very similar trend statewide where the percentage of proficient students drops about five percent from third to fourth grade, an additional seven percent between fourth to fifth grade, and an additional one percent drop from fifth to sixth grade. When we look at all of our sixth graders who took the all of our sixth graders together, not just the ones that are at the elementary sites, we see about thirty-nine percent total who are at or above benchmark on STAR, which makes our data fit very closely to the state trends from two thousand nineteen. And here we have the middle school students and their STAR math data and the high schools. At the June, excuse me, at the June board meeting earlier this year, and there was an interest in exploring the percentage of students in categories other than those who are at or above benchmark. Here you see the STAR early literacy distribution. The green represents the students at or above benchmark, blue represents on watch. The the yellow bars indicate the students needing intervention, and those in red are in need of urgent intervention. Here is the similar data for STAR reading and the category breakdown for STAR math. Renaissance grouped students into performance levels based on two sets of benchmark cutoffs. The national cutoffs compare student performance to other students across the country and are ideal for helping teachers group students for day-to-day instruction and identify students in need of additional supports. These national cutoffs are what you've been seeing throughout this presentation. The state cutoffs group students into four performance levels similar to how the state plays state places students in four levels after they take the CASP and serves as a predictor for how students will perform on the state test. This chart compares the percentage of students who are nationally at or above benchmark compared to the percentage of students who are likely to meet or exceed standard on the state CASP assessment. And finally, before I pass to my colleagues, I'd like to make the board and the community aware of a change in data reporting that you will notice this year. Beginning this year, Renaissance learning is switching to a new scale, which will allow us to compare data across STAR early literacy and STAR reading, and also compare the Spanish assessments to those administered in English. This will benefit our newcomer students and those in our dual language immersion program. The change in scale will not change how we look at some of our key data points, including the percentile rank. However, students, parents, teachers, and the community may notice the scaled scores that they see this year in Ares, and other reports will not necessarily be comparable to the scaled scores that they saw last year. And with that, I will pass it to my colleagues.
Thank you, Dr. Booth, for the data reporting that helps us go to work in instruction. As we consider the baseline data that was provided for STAR, we're currently implementing three practices across the K twelve spectrum. Staff has received a training through the Professional Development Day in October, as well as individualized at the sites through staff meetings, department meetings, and professional learning community time. The instructional services, as well as sites, are providing targeted support for English learners based on their scores and based on their range, and principals at each sites are implementing their school site plans, putting them into actions with these four-week learning sprints, which means that principals are partnering with teachers to set a goal focused on either English or math, in this case, English, and then providing targeted support within the classroom to staff and students, reviewing the data to analyze and see how students are growing and achieving, and then making adjustments as they review that data. With that, I will turn it over to Director Manning, who's going to share how we're providing support in reading and literacy at the various grade levels.
Thank you, Director Ready. At the elementary level, we are committed to improving K two early literacy results. To this end, we are fortunate to be able to purchase last year an improved phonics program within our adopted curriculum benchmark advance. At the beginning of the year, we set a goal of providing training to all of the teachers who are using the program. By October fifteenth, we achieved that goal, and teachers are now using the program across elementary schools. We are providing additional resources to teachers for use during their small group instruction time. This is the time when the teacher is working with a small group of students while the other students are working independently. Choice boards are being developed and shared with teachers to ensure that the independent work time is meaningful. We have partnered with Dr. Tammy Hefflebauer to provide training on the development of English Language Arts proficiency scales. That work is well underway, and we are making steady progress. Accelerated Reader is being used at middle schools to encourage reading. Accelerated Reader allows students to select books of interest at their own level. The author series continues to continues this year and is occurring during the school day this year so that students are able, more students are able to attend. Next slide, please. Thank you. With regard to elementary math, we are continuing our focus on strengthening the implementation of our core math program, Bridges Mathematics and Number Corner. We are providing ongoing training and coaching to staff with six weeks of support from our Bridges coach, Pia Hansen, this year. We have already had two weeks of coaching, and we will have our third week coming up following the Thanksgiving break. We are fortunate to have our own retired teacher and math content expert, Barb Cornet, continuing to provide professional development, working with both teachers and principals this year. All of the intervention teachers have been trained to use the Bridges Math Intervention Curriculum, ensuring that our math intervention resources are closely aligned to our core program. Assessments have been developed and are being used to better align with the report card expectations for each trimester, and professional development is being provided on methods for leveraging math instruction to support English learner success. Elementary principals are invested in improving math results. CIPS goals support math improvements, and principals are working with grade-level teams to analyze data and plan instruction. Principals conducted learning walks in math classrooms in October using a common observation and feedback protocol. We calibrated around these observations at a recent principal meeting and are moving into more focused learning walks with principals will specifically observe for the level of quality engagement of our English learners. New principals have received and will continue to receive ongoing training and support with learning walks at their sites. I'll go ahead and pass back to Director Ready.
Thank you. Secondary, similar to elementary, is heavily focused on our math programming as a part of annual board priority number three. And since August, we've had teams of math teachers and members of our instructional support services team reviewing and revising the priority standards so that we have alignment across our system, ensuring that our students are accessing the priorities for each level of math. We're also looking at our proficiency scales, developing and refining those so that we can assess students appropriately in between the various the STAR assessment windows for that ongoing assessment and review of data and see how we can provide targeted supports to students. And as we move into the spring, as mentioned earlier, reviewing and revision of those existing assessments, so we continue to have that targeted data and support to students based off of these priority standards. As mentioned earlier, our data cycles that are aligned to our school site plans are happening in four-week learning sprints. In the spring, we will continue to assess students in the STAR, and we will shift our focus to implementing the development of those assessments and providing targeted instructional practices that will support student learning. So with that, I will turn it over to Director Knox, who will share the implications for interventions and MTSS.
Thank you, Director Ready. Good evening, trustees, superintendent Dr. Musetti, student representative Bit. It is a pleasure to be here with you this evening to talk a little bit about the implications for this data on interventions and prevention and MTSS. So, as you know, we've reported before in board meetings that each site now has at least a part-time interventionist teacher on special assignment that is assigned to their school. These interventionists have received intensive training so far this year in both program implementation of the Bridges Intervention Program as well as the new newly adopted Benchmark Phonics Intervention Program. And they have not just received program implementation training, but also training in the data and the the data in from STAR Renaissance and also from Data Zone to disaggregate not just the students who are performing well, but also looking at the students who need those extra scoops and figuring out the entry and exit criteria for the small intervention groups that they are leading at the sites. They work with their MTSS teams at the elementary level to look at the data, to analyze the data, and to really triage the students who need the most support. And then they build their schedules for those small group interventions so as not to interfere with the students' core English Language Arts and math learning. They try to schedule it so that students are pulled out from other parts of the day so that it really is an extra scoop on top of the core instruction for those students. At the secondary level, every site has a point to MTSS Lead who has received training recently in STAR Renaissance data analysis as well as Data Zone usage to look at trends across the data and then also triage the need and place students in tier-two supports, supplemental supports such as targeted RTI or FLEX periods or times within their school day where they can receive some targeted support to help them with their English class or their math classes. In addition to that, they are using the MTSS teams to determine students who may need targeted after-school tutoring, homework club support, either during lunch or after-school, peer tutoring, more intensive one-on-one academic counseling, or ACE all day at the middle schools. So those are some of the the things that the school sites are doing, the MTSS teams are doing in order to address and respond to the data that Dr. Booth and his team have put together. We try to be responsive, try to be proactive and preventative so that we can do some early intervention with students to make sure that they are able to access their core learning. And with that, that's the conclusion of this report from our team, and we wanted to pause and see if there were any questions that we might be able to address.
So one of the things I wanted to mention was just my appreciation tonight for some of the strategies that we have been informed of that we're using to address some of the, I'm going to call it alarming, data that we have seen tonight. So I do appreciate having the those strategies included in tonight's presentation and it not just being wrote numbers. So thank you for that. Second, I wanted to get into, we were cautioned that last year's data might not be super reliable due to the situation under which the testing was done. And yet today's data mirrors what we saw last year. Math proficiency continues to peak in first grade and then falls off a cliff in second grade and then declines every year thereafter until it bottoms out in fifth or sixth grade. This is concerning to me, and I would like to look further into the first grade to second grade slide, which is itself a drop of twenty points, and would be interested in the future hearing more about why you think that might be happening. The other thing that I find disturbing is that it appears we have a very large group of students. It appears roughly over twenty-five percent across the board that are in need of urgent intervention in reading and another twenty or so percent that are in need of intervention in reading. Is it even feasible for us to accomplish that much intervention at the forty to twenty-five percent level for our students who need it?
And thank you, trustee Gracia, for that question, and then I'll I'll respond and then pass to my team if they want to add any additional information. I mean, I think the data is not surprising, given the hybrid learning that happened last year. I mean, I think we did have some expectation that there would be a significant number of students who needed some pretty urgent intervention, which is why, you know, the intervention interventionists at the elementary were were that program was implemented, the extra intervention programs for English Language Arts and math were also part of our efforts early in the year. And so when you when you have that many students that are in need of intensive intervention, you really have to look to your tier one and what's happening in the classroom and your core instruction and do as much intervention support and targeted instruction during that tier-one time. And so that is part of the work that we've been focused on since school started, recognizing that this year there were going to be quite a few students who needed intensive intervention and that we would not necessarily be able to do a pull-out program for that number of students. And so that was one of the strategies that we began the year with in terms of increasing support for tier-one intervention. I'll open it up to many of the directors if they want to respond maybe more specifically to that.
I just would like to acknowledge the concern and the shared concern around the shift from first to second grade, and we are committed to looking into that and determining what the cause of that might be, and that also is an indication for us of where additional support might be needed when we see a gap emerging like that, that indicates to us that that's an area where we would want provide additional resources and support to remedy what what the situation that might be arising there.
I'll add just an example of the of what Assistant Superintendent Andrew Jennings is mentioning about targeting first-round instruction with an example from American Canyon Middle School. A principal partnering with a team of teachers in the math department with an intervention program freckles that's aligned to the STAR assessment that's allowing coaching, setting of goals within the math program and coaching and support within the core math classes, and then using an intervention program that's aligned to that so that students can receive the appropriate support in a timely manner embedded in their courses and then tracking that data. And so that's just an example of how, when you have this number, which is a concern, I acknowledge, what Director Manning also acknowledges, and how that can be tackled within the classroom, whether it's in the elementary or secondary level.
Thank you for answering my questions.
So I actually, this is, I attended as a parent. I attended the ALPS information session November ninth where Director Manning had mentioned, I think it was the choice board. And, you know, this was a talk for for the kids in ALPS, but I thought that the choice board was a really nice way of having differentiation within the classroom. So I was wondering if Director Manning can can speak a little bit more about that because I think that that this is a main thing for the teachers and the training, I think, is going to really help the students at all levels.
I'd be happy to speak to that. So we're starting with the choice boards in the English Language Arts, again, given the need to really address what's happening in a small group instruction time and ensure that students, when they're working independently, are engaged in meaningful work. But math is absolutely another area where choice boards can be very, very helpful. So a choice board is basically a way of providing differentiation of instruction. So students, teachers are able to provide, it's not necessarily a physical board. It could be something that's online. It's a place where students can go and the teacher can can assign a student different levels of work based on what their need might be. So one one element of the choice board might be Dreambox. One group of students might be doing some review work, and other group of students might be doing some work that requires them to apply a concept that they just learned. So these are, they're very helpful in terms of allowing teachers to differentiate. And we, as an instructional division at the elementary level, are committed to helping develop those for and with teachers so that it's not something that we're asking them to develop on their own. So again, the choice boards are, we're starting with ELA and will certainly be moving into the math arena as well.
So is there anything similar to that that's going to happen at the secondary level?
Thank you for asking that question. Director Manning and I are working on looking at the ALPS program at the secondary level and and seeing how we can provide some alignment and some supports within the classroom and also through some after-school activities in clubs throughout the day to support not just their extension, but also their passions around their learning.
I think the differentiation can not only help the ALPS kids. I was thinking, you know, that this was, the choice board was really good at helping even those who are in urgent interventions, you know, category as well because you get to address those needs in the classroom at that time. So I really appreciate the fact that that's actually, you know, the focus this year. My second comment is actually just a suggestion for the future when you present the STAR data is if we can pull out the MBIS data compared to those students who are in school because I think it's worthwhile to see whether that makes, I mean, I, my guess is it does make an impact when you're in the school and you're in front of the teacher, I think you learn so much better. But I think it's worthwhile for us to evaluate whether that model is going to work, especially the pandemic is still around next year and people are still wanting to opt for independent studies. I think it would be worthwhile to kind of separate that data and tease it out.
And I think Dr. Booth would probably agree it is possible to do that. And we are so awaiting some guidance from the state about whether or not we are, will be allowed to use virtual learning as an option for collecting ADA. So, but I think that would be important to look at the difference between how students are doing or attending in person versus virtual.
Do you see any differences now? I mean, I don't know if you guys have had a chance to look at the students in MBIS versus those that are in traditional schools.
We have not taken a look at that data closely, but that's definitely something that we can look at and get back to you on. We did look at that closely last year because we had so many students doing virtual learning. And I agree that that's a good data point for us to take a look at moving forward as we evaluate the success of that model and that program.
I do have a couple of questions, and I apologize for this one. But Director Manning, can you define what a learning walk is for me?
Absolutely. A learning walk is when a principal, a group of teachers, anyone goes into a classroom just to sit and observe and learn along with the students what's happening in the classroom. And then ultimately, oftentimes, the learning walk would follow up with some feedback to the teacher and an opportunity to engage with the teacher about what they saw and a conversation can ensue. So it's just a term for getting out into a classroom and observing.
Great, thank you very much. In reading, I understand that we're right at state standard, ever so slightly above in elementary and middle and slightly below in high school. But the breakdown of EL's IEP free and reduce reflect the difficulty in defining achievement when there are such diverse factors that contribute to these percentages. So that being said, so I empathize with the difficulty of actually defining achievement as opposed to just presenting data. And you could argue, some could argue that as material gets more difficult, proficiency scores reflect the increased learning curve. But if comprehension is based on these learning layers and a student's comprehension is deemed, let's say, insufficient, as is reflected in some of the scores, our curriculum content remains a relative constant. How do we, it's difficult to prevent these substandard test scores. My, I don't know if it's a concern. I guess my question is, if students matriculate to the next grade without the sufficient skills to address the next level of curricular understanding, are we creating an unintended self-fulfilling prophecy? I understand that all of these interventions and the difficulty of assessing each student group is profound. And I do appreciate that we are implementing these early warning indicators and that we have, as David mentioned, numerous approaches. But what makes me a little apprehensive is if some of the data suggests that some of these children may not be proficient enough to matriculate to the next grade. I believe they do matriculate to the next grade. How do we address that as a system?
Thank you, Trustee Jankowitz, for that question. The way we address it is really working on what we call the Tier One instructional practices and using evidence-based practices in getting and accelerating student growth. Because as we all know, the hybrid learning in the year of pandemic instruction, all students are not probably where they would have been had we had sort of more of a normal school year last year or ended the 1920, 2020 school year, the 1920 school year, the way we did. So I think we recognize that, I think we have to sort of reframe it a bit, that it's not that students are advancing behind, but they are where they are and we take them and try to accelerate their growth as much as possible. And the greatest factor in that is the instructional practices that we use and being really intentional and strategic and using the data that we have to support students exactly where they need.
And is that difficult then, when you have content and curriculum that is normally assigned to specific grades? And due to the, you know, obvious hurdles that COVID in the last two years have presented, how do we then manage the content piece, the curriculum piece, the need to hit certain, you know, academic instructional benchmarks, but we're so behind? Do you feel it's possible that by the time we, they kind of matriculate through, that we're going to be able to get the one-year's growth and one-year time, but that the curriculum also will mimic and support where these kids are by the end of graduation?
Well, yes, I mean, part of the work that we're doing is around identifying those priority standards, those really, those standards, they used to be referred to as power standards. Those are the standards that really impact students' ability in the next grade level to access the learning. And because standards, often they spiral. So even if a student might struggle with a particular standard, they will touch on it again in another grade level and have an opportunity to grow and develop the skill in the next grade level. I think sometimes there's a sense that there's a certain amount of content knowledge that students need to have in order to like matriculate to the next grade level, when really we're working on the skills associated with the standards that we want to grow and develop. And that's one way that we are trying to address that by having those priority standards in math and in English Language Arts to support students and really targeted instruction on those standards. I don't know if any of the directors wanted to add anything to that or if there was another or part of the question, Trustee, that you didn't feel was adequately answered.
No, it's always adequately answered. Thank you very much. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
No, I just wanted to thank you. That was a very clarifying answer, and I appreciate it.
We still, and we recognize there's a lot of work to do, you know, and really trying to support students where they're at.
We know that, thank you.
I wanted to, excuse me, kind of echo Trustee Gracia's point about the strategies that are embedded in this presentation. I, and also echo what Assistant Superintendent Andrew Jennings just said, that there's a lot of work to do. This is the baseline data, and I'm very interested in the next rounds of this data and seeing how these strategies play out and seeing the data reflect them. That's obviously our sincere hope. And I guess it just gives me a sense that there's a lot of work to do. We're in the fall, we're seeing these, you know, the beginning of the school year positioning of our students. And I'm glad that, and heartened by the fact that we are approaching it as a, this is our starting point and these are our strategies for addressing where our students are. So thank you.
Well, to your point, the baseline and the statistics give us kind of the achievement context, but it's the process coupled with, you know, the professional development, all the different approaches that will, in my mind at least, drive the statistical improvement and the relevance. And that's the most important piece. I mean, the data is important, but our approach and that consistency is what is going to drive us. So while it's important that the percentage increases, well, or, you know, to see the percentage increases and decrease, the process updates to me are of great, great value. So thank you for that consistency.
Yeah, I want to thank Trustee Jankowitz for identifying that challenge, which really, as a teacher, you know, you meet students where they are, but the grade level standards and expectations are also fixed. And so it is a constant challenge to meet students where they are and endeavor to bring them where the state standards say they need to be. And I just want to reiterate the contextualizing of this data, which is, you know, Trustee Gracia, I'm not unconcerned about the second grade math scores, but if you think about those students who are reflected in that data, they've not had a normal school year yet. Their kindergarten year ended in March and their first grade year was virtual and then hybrid. And they were getting half of the instructional time that they would normally get, and they were getting it in a wide variety of conditions that may or may not have been conducive to learning. And now they've been back in school for a few months, and this is our first assessment. So I just really think it's important to keep that in mind. That, you know, the numbers are not where we wish that they were, but we're dealing with students that have really missed a ton of instructional time and have, and are still in conditions that are challenging to a wide variety of degrees. You know, a lot of families are in survival mode and students are dealing with stressors outside of school. So I just really think it's important to keep that in mind and to keep top of mind also how hard our teachers and our staff are working every day, showing up, and as I said, meeting their students where they are and endeavoring to bring them where the state standards say they need to be. I really appreciated the, how in-depth the instructional staff went here on these reports, you know, on those slides labeled implications. You know, it, as you're looking at the data and maybe your heart sinks a little and you think, wow, that's a lot of kids that aren't proficient in math and reading. And this is, you know, how can we fix this? And then to turn to the next slide and see, you know, the word that kept popping up in my mind was just strategic. Everything is so strategic and intelligently designed to be data-driven, to be explicit in goals, to be building capacity of our teachers. I think that that's such an important piece that is really, you know, our district is prioritizing that. And that's going to have a huge impact. You know, we can't, and even just in the report to hear, oh, the teachers are, you know, all the interventionists have been trained in the intervention program and everyone that's using this program has been trained. Like, that sounds like a no-brainer, but that is not always done. And I contest that fact because I, when I was teaching second grade, the district that I worked for adopted a new language arts program and I got boxes and boxes of materials. And I was not given any professional development on using that program until two years later. So you're left to kind of fend for yourself and try to make sense of all the components of the program and, you know, find time in your teaching day to, or in your unpaid, after your teaching day time to, you know, try to make sense of it with your colleagues and do the best you can in implementation. So I just cannot stress enough the importance of the work and the importance and we're putting our money where our mouth is in saying we want, we want to build capacity with our teachers. And the combination of that capacity building and just how intensively strategic everything, all of the interventions and plans described here are. The example of the principal learning walk, I mean, that's amazing to identify ahead of time. Look, we're going to have principals going through, and this time, here's your protocol. All principals at all sites are looking for the same things and we're focusing on number corner. You know, that is so different than a principal strolling through your room for five or 10 minutes, you know, not really there looking for anything, just walking through to kind of see what's going on. Like, we're just asking for that strategic thinking and data-driven decision-making from, at every level. And that in combination, I just think it's going to take a little time for us to see the long, the impact of that. And that in combination with the MTSS program that we're rolling out here, I really think that that is going to be such a powerful combination. And so I really was not, you know, I can't say that the STAR data was cause for celebration, although the math scores were looked, were, I think, higher than they have been in the past. But I just have confidence that the plan laid out by staff that has been described here tonight is just the smartest steps thought through by a really, really smart professional team. So I'm just so grateful and encouraged. And then the proficiency scales are just another example of that, of like, rather than saying, oh, this kid is not making it, or, you know, the way that we are getting so explicit at every grade level on, this is what it means to be approaching mastering of that skill. It's going to be clear for the students, oh, this is what I need to know how to do. It's going to be clear for the teachers, oh, this is what I need to make sure my kids can do by this point in the year to make sure that we're reaching proficiency by the end. So I don't really have any questions. I'm just, thank you for your hard work and I really have confidence that it may take us a little time, the combination of these early instruction interventions that we're putting into place really strategically, especially at the early grades, in combination with the, you know, the time that it's taking, that it's taking everyone across the world, really, all students to recover and make up for the lost instruction time and the trauma that we collectively are continuing to go through. I really have confidence that our student learning and the associated data is going to show the impact of those steps that we're taking. So keep up the good work, thank you.
So I just wanted to respond to the comments that were directed towards me. I do believe that while certainly COVID has impacted our system, at the end of the day, it is not an excuse for the underperformance of our students. And at base, we have had horrible math and reading CASP scores for years prior to COVID. And so I do not believe that is the reason that we sit today with these low scores. You know, certainly, students were impacted, but I will never be willing to accept any excuses with regards to student performance as I believe firmly that all students are capable of excellence and it's our job to help them get there. So I look forward in the future to seeing improvement.
I do too. And, but I have to say, I absolutely cannot dismiss the extraordinary year, year and a half we've been through. And Trustee Gracia is perfectly correct. Our math scores have been less than stellar for quite some time. And that's why a couple of years ago, we said, we're going to do something about it. And we didn't say, oh, well, we didn't make excuses, actually, we didn't. We said, no matter what, we're going to fix this. We are not going to fail our students. We are going to improve. And we would be far too long had it not been for the pandemic, that is for sure. And I just want to thank everybody, our presenters tonight. And it's really, it's a lot of work, but it's worth it, and I believe it's going to pay off. I just, I really believe it's going to pay off. And I think that, I think it's, I said yesterday, it's great that we're being so candid about it. We're talking about this in public. And I think that, I think it's, I said yesterday, it's great that we're being so candid about it. We're talking about this in public right now. You know, people could yell at us about it. You know, and cast blame on us, but we, a couple of years ago said, we can do better and we're going to do better. And that, we're in the process of doing better and it is a process. It takes a while, but we are going to get there. And thank you for all your work.
I think that being said, we're, we're conducting tremendous amount of hard work with even the many other decisions that we're having to make because of data such as this, that we were dedicated so much on, on the data telling us the story and and why we've, we've had to make some very hard and difficult decisions because we believe so much in our, in our students and our staff to, to provide those opportunities for, for our kids to, to succeed. I only have one comment. I was looking at, it was just over a year ago or so that we saw the other STAR assessment and it was really great to see more of the English learner data bit of comparison, especially knowing that many of our schools have, you know, a little over 60% of the kiddos are English language learners and others around 37% or so, and then 25. So a significant number of our students are English learners. And I think that's the only items that I missed in these graphs to see that comparison because I think it continues to provide us similar to including independent studies data as well. So that's the only thing in the data that I did missing, seeing that portion of our students and their assessments come to, come to light. So I don't know if that was intentional for assistant superintendent Pat Andrew Jennings, or is that going to come later in a presentation?
I believe that Dr. Boot actually put together some slides with some additional information that disaggregates the data based on English learners and like free and reduced lunch and, and things like that. So that is something that we can share and make sure it's available. I don't know if Dr. Boot wants to comment.
Yes, thank you. So some of that data is in the executive summary that's attached to the agenda for tonight. So some of those details are in there, but we can look at including those details in the actual presentation moving forward. And it's definitely important that we look at those subgroups.
Right. Last year was, and then last, it was broken down by school. I, I understand that I'm not having you do that at all. But that was also very helpful to see the breakdown by school as well. Well, thank you. Any other questions or comments? No? Okay. Includes this item. Thank you. And we have entered our time for us to take a quick break. And so we will return. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, everybody. We are now and now moving on to our next presentation. And this has to do with our NVUSD middle school redesign update.
Well, good evening again, President Gonzalez-Morris, board trustees, Dr. Macedi, student representative, and the NVUSD community. We are eager to share with you the progress that has been made to improve the middle school experience for our students and our families. I'm going to ask Mr. Michaels if he can put up the slide presentation. Thank you so much. I also want to just take a moment just to thank our principals who are, have been hanging in here and hanging out with us as we wait for this item to come up. If we can go to the next slide, Mr. Michaels, please. Tonight, some of our school leaders will present the work we have done to bring alignment and coherence to our middle school programming. Tonight, you will hear from Matt Manning and Monica Reddy, directors of curriculum instruction and English learner services for elementary and secondary respectively. You will also hear from principals Brian Gardner, Frank Silva, Alejandra Uribe, Carlyse Batalier, Jen Cole, and Mary Ann Kirstofferson, and they will be part of our presentation team for this evening. Next slide, please. Our work during this phase of the middle school redesign process was focused on bringing alignment and coherence to our middle school programming. This work is alignment with annual work priority number one and NVUSD's strategic plan focused on student achievement, learning and access. As I, as I stated, our focus has been on improving the middle school experience to support the unique needs of our middle school students so that they can thrive socially, emotionally and academically. With that, I will pass the mic to Dr. Umthrock, Dr. Not Yet, Director Reddy, who has been the lead in the middle school redesign work. Next slide, please.
Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Jennings. And so during the middle school redesign process in the spring, we heard from our community the following interests around advisory, a time for students to come together with an adult, equitable access to programming, small learning communities, after-school programming, transportation, social emotional learning, transitional support for staff, students and families, and strengthening of our dual-language immersion programming. Tonight, you'll hear from our staff how each of these interests are being addressed at a deeper level through our redesign processes. Some of these already currently exist and we can strengthen them and some of them are new through our redesign process. Next slide, please. So NVUSD offers options within the middle school for families and students to choose from. Our first options are a comprehensive middle school experience at American Canyon Middle School, Redwood Middle School, and Silverado Middle School, a language and cultural arts integration academy at Unidos Middle School, and a K-8 option at Browns Valley and Shear Elementary Schools. So tonight, we have an incredible team of principals as assistant superintendent Andrew Jennings mentioned to share more about these options. Next slide, please. And with that, I will turn it over to the principal of American Canyon Middle School, Principal Batalier.
Hi there. So the NVUSD middle school design team was created strategically from representatives from each of today's current middle school communities, which includes students, parents, teachers, and administrators, ensuring voices of all stakeholders. The team first met in August before the school year started, where we worked in partnership with equity designers from a company called Design for Emergence. Their facilitation helped us co-design a cohesive vision for NVUSD middle schools. We developed a theory of action and design principles, leading us to agreements that brought coherence and alignment. All team members worked through strategic design, thinking principles, and processes design-thinking principles and processes, guiding us forward in developing our first draft of the district's middle school vision, design principles, and core elements. These drafts were shared out to other focus groups in the middle school communities, which consisted of student groups, staff, leadership teams, and parent groups. The middle school design team reconvened on October 15th, after district leadership gathered feedback. This feedback was shared with the middle school design team. During the design team's time together, we synthesized the feedback and revised the vision and design principles, clarifying what was most important for our middle schools and how to best serve student needs, with the ongoing goal of providing safe, responsive, and supportive transitions for staff, students, and families. Next slide, please. In the last iteration, we present to you today the vision of Napa Valley Unified School District Middle Schools, which is to provide an inclusive, equitable, responsive, order, and rigorous education, where students have a sense of belonging. Students are encouraged to discover who they are and to learn to advocate and contribute with a highly quality within a contribute within a high-quality educational environment. Next slide, please. Through the redesign process, it has provided a way to develop the alignment of core elements that you will find at all of our comprehensive middle schools, which include the following: All students will have time built into the schedule that is focused on building community, social-emotional development, and connection to adults and peers. All students will have integrated and designated social-emotional learning. All students will have equitable access to programming, such as music, art, and other electives. All sites will facilitate opportunities for small learning communities that provide a safe, inclusive, and responsive learning environment. All sites will benefit from professional learning around equitable and effective grading practices. This redesign process has been amazing with the involvement of students in center, with their voices and the voices of the community, parents, teachers, staff, and administrators, working collaboratively, forming creative activities and experiences. We leave each meeting learning through ambiguities, encouragement from the solutions that surface. We find words of hope, excitement, and inspiration as we continue and look forward to the progress of what we can do in the future to support student success. I now pass the microphone to my wonderful colleague, Principal Cole, as she shares what all this may look like and through the eye of a middle school student.
Thank you so much, Dr. Batalier. Yes, so what does this look like when you are a student? What experience do you have? We'll go on to the next slide, please. And our Napa Valley Unified School District Comprehensive Middle Schools will become even further aligned throughout this process than they are right now. Next slide, please. And so when you are a student and you arrive at one of our comprehensive middle schools, you'll find that you will be taking six classes, and each of our schools will have some sort of teaming structure embedded in the daily schedule for students, so that there's an experience that creates that small learning environment for kids. In sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, they'll take English Language Arts, they'll take math with accelerated opportunities in the seventh and the eighth grade, reaching into the ninth-grade Math I curriculum in our eighth-grade classes. They will each take social studies in the sixth, seventh, and the eighth grade. They'll take science in the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. PE, of course, we have to have that PE very important to keep our kids active and healthy. And then they'll have aligned elective opportunities at each of our comprehensive middle schools. Opportunities will include leadership, visual arts, performing arts, AVID, and we will also include each day a flex time. And that flex time is going to look a little bit different as schools figure out exactly what time of day that flex time is going to be offered and exactly what schedule that flex time is going to have throughout the course of a week. But it will include that very important social-emotional learning component that we all want our children to experience throughout their middle school years. It will also include that RTI. So we talk a lot about how do we intervene? Where does that intervention take place in terms of academic support? And so we'll build that into the school day, as well as using some of the things that you heard the directors talk about earlier in the presentation with the STAR data that's embedded in our Tier One instruction. I'm going to turn it over to Mary Ann Kirstofferson, I believe. Next slide, please.
Thank you, Principal Cole. So what do the core elements look like in action? So we have several categories. I'm going to start with community building and social-emotional learning first. So at each of our comprehensives, we will have an advisory and flex time, and we'll have to determine how often that happens in a given week. Right now, we are offering flex time, which is our RTI time for four days a week, and it seems to be working well. We are also utilizing for our social-emotional learning the second-step curriculum, and we're using that at all the comprehensive currently right now. We have three signature practices that we have really began to use this school year, which is a warm welcome. And a warm welcome, you're probably asking, what is a warm welcome? Well, a warm welcome builds community in a classroom. It establishes a sense of shared values, and it also makes everyone in the classroom feel included. A brain break is a quick structured break that gets a student up and moving around, and it could be a physical movement. It could be mindfulness. It could be a breathing technique, but it just gives a student a break from that high cognitive demand when they're learning. And then we have a closing ritual. We like to call it an optimistic closure, and those are activities that use social-emotional practices to reinforce the day's lesson. And so students feel confident when they leave that particular classroom lesson. We also have community circles, and we can utilize those in our homeroom. We call it homeroom. Other schools call it advisory. And the community circles can also be a way when students experience any type of conflict, we can bring them together with a counselor or administrator that leads them through a harm circle repair, and it works very, very well. At all the comprehensives, we currently have a wellness center, and we offer many groups and counseling support services. We have many community support services that come into our school and provide support to our students. We also have student clubs and lunchtime activities. And then I'm going to move over to the right side. We have small learning communities. Currently, we have teaming. We also have advisory, which Principal Cole spoke to a few minutes ago. We do currently have bell schedules that include two lunch periods. Currently, right now, at Redwood, we have a sixth-grade lunch, and then we have another lunch that incorporates our seventh and eighth graders. We also meet in grade-level teams. We meet in vertical content teams, and we also meet in academic teams for our professional learning time that we have together. Next slide, please. And then, as far as academic support, we are standard-based curriculum in alignment, and we do offer blending learning experiences for our students that combines online educational materials and opportunities for interaction with the traditional classroom lesson plan. We also have accelerated offerings at all the comprehensives. We do have built-in intervention time, and every English learner has an English Language Development class on top of the regular Language Arts course. We do offer after-school tutoring through the ACE program, and we have currently several classroom teachers that are offering tutoring after school. And we do have tutoring through the AMERCOR program, which is also an extension of ACE. We are currently in the beginning stages of grading for equity professional development to look at the best ways to assess and grade our students that is equitable. And then, to the right, we have our elective programming. Some exploratory examples are STEM, culinary, garden, video production. We have leadership. We have yearbook. We do have performing arts. We have band choir. We have offer strings. We have music appreciation, and we also offer, at least at Redwood, we do, we offer a drumming course. And then other electives may include AVID, and there's probably many more at different comprehensives that I'm not aware of. But those are those are some of the elective programming that's offered at the comprehensives. So I am going to hand this over now to Principal Uribe.
Thank you, and good evening. If you can advance to the next slide, please. It's my pleasure to talk to you about the developments at Unidos Middle School, which is a middle school with a focus on language development and integration of cultural arts. Next slide, please. As we continue to develop the UNI program at Unidos during the school year, I'd like to share with you our anchor, which is our mission and vision. And I'd like to read that to you. The mission is to provide a global education that instills a love for learning and honors languages and cultures. And our vision is that all students are empowered to achieve academic excellence while growing bilingualism, by literacy, and interpersonal connections in a community that is responsive to the well-being of all learners. The vision includes the three goals of language development, which is, again, bilingualism, by literacy, and the connections that are made between all community members in our school. And these three goals are research-based and are at the forefront of the work as we continue to develop our program. Next slide, please. As part of NVUSD Middle Schools, Unidos will also incorporate the NVUSD Middle School core elements as described by Dr. Batalier. The other two elements that you see on the screen are you need to Unidos. We will offer two main language academic pathways, which I will go a little bit more in detail in the next slide. But with the dual-language immersion piece, we will be receiving both NBLA and PD students who are moving through the K-12 dual-language pathway as we continue to deepen their language acquisition skills at Unidos during their middle school years. In addition, we will also offer Spanish courses for students who are new to Spanish language instruction. And the third component is a very exciting piece that we will be able to offer our students. It's a cultural arts integration component. And what this means is that we will be taking subject areas and bridging them with the arts as students make connections across the content areas and show understanding of the subject matter in art form. And here lies an infinite opportunities for teachers across the subject areas to engage in deep levels of collaboration, as they not only teach their content area, but also engage, motivate, foster curiosity, make connections, and tap into student voice as art becomes a tool to help develop the mind, refine thoughts, and gain a deeper understanding and appreciation of the subject matter and then also art form. And it's very exciting to think about the possibilities that we can incorporate as we're integrating cultural arts. You know, we're thinking about, you know, music. We're thinking about dance, fine arts, drama, photography. You know, there's just a lot of different components here that we can integrate. Next slide, please. And here, I'd just like to share with you, you know, a day in the life at Unidos. What is that going to look like for our students? So we talked about in the previous slide as the two different language pathways that we are going to offer our students. The column on the far left is what our dual-immersion students will experience. Again, these are the students that we are receiving from both NBLA and Pueblo Vista. So we will offer six classes. Our goal is to offer three classes in Spanish and three classes in English. You can see we have English Language Arts, we have math in English, PE in English, and then you see we have social studies in Spanish, science in Spanish, and then we have Spanish Language Arts. The last two columns, the ones that are in the darker blue, those are the offerings for students who are new to Spanish Language Arts instruction. We realize that we will be needing two different types of students who are new to the Spanish Language Arts instruction. The middle column talks about students who are completely new to Spanish language. So for that type of student, we will offer English Language Arts, math in English, social studies in English, science in English, and the introduction of Spanish, Spanish one, two, three, depending on the grade level, and then, of course, PE. And then the last column is very similar to what we're going to offer our students in the middle column, except that you see the difference here is that we will offer Spanish for Spanish speakers. We know that we may receive students who speak Spanish, who grew up speaking Spanish at home and can speak it fluently, but haven't had formal instruction in Spanish. So for that type of student, we would offer students Spanish for Spanish speakers to help them further develop their reading and their writing skills. For all of our students at Unidos, we would offer early and late-night options, and this includes band. With that, I will toss to Matt, Director Matt Manning.
Thank you very much, Principal Uribe. So you can go ahead and move to the next slide, please. Thank you. So I'm pleased to be able to present to you this evening our K-8 pilot options at both Browns Valley and Shear schools. Go ahead and move to the next slide, please. So as a little bit of background, the idea for the K-8 schools emerged last year as part of the middle school redesign and school closure process. There was a group of parents who were very strongly interested in the K-8 option for their children, for their students. So recommendation was made to offer a K-8 option at both Shear and Browns Valley for this current school year, beginning with sixth grade, this current school year, and then adding an additional grade level each year, each subsequent year. So at the end of last year, after our survey process and meetings with parents, we were able to launch a sixth-grade class at Shear. So there is currently a sixth-grade class at Shear School, and Browns Valley didn't have enough interest last year, but we're very, very optimistic about the movement for the K-8 model at Browns Valley for the coming school year, beginning with sixth and seventh grade. So we are currently open and rolling at both Browns Valley and Shear for both sixth and seventh grade for next year. So with that, I'd like to introduce Principal Brian Gardner, who's going to talk to you a little bit about the program design at both of our K-8 pilot schools. Mr. Gardner? You can move to the next slide, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Manning. Next slide, please. Or pardon me.
No, that's your slide.
Okay, yeah, we're good. Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you. I'm really excited to have this opportunity to share the classroom structure of our future sixth-through eighth-grade classrooms at Shear and Browns Valley. Sixth grade will have a similar look to our current TK-through-fifth-grade classrooms, which are self-contained, meaning that sixth graders will have one teacher who will teach the core subjects: English Language Arts, Social Science, Math, and Science, and also PE. And that's currently the model that we're using right now, and that's going very well. However, there is also the potential for team teaching next year within our sixth-grade team. However, there is also the potential for team teaching next year within our sixth grade team, where students and teachers will have the opportunity to work together in different classrooms. And then sixth grade, sixth graders will continue to receive music instruction from NVUSD teachers. And then our seventh and eighth grade classes will resemble more of a block schedule design and have two core teachers. So one will teach ELA and Social Studies, and the other will teach or provide instruction in math and science. And they'll also continue to receive PE instruction from NVUSD teachers. We're also excited that there will be an elective wheel to provide additional course offerings and enrichment. And so at this point, I'd like to toss over to Frank Silva, the principal of Browns Valley Elementary, who will discuss the elective wheel option.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to present to you tonight. I'll be talking about the elective wheel at the TK or K-8 model. The elective wheel will be comprised of four different electives that students will rotate through throughout the year. Some of these examples will include leadership, social justice, community service, art robotics, or garden. These electives will be dictated by several major drivers, student interests, the skill sets of our middle school teachers, and the culture and needs of the school site and students. We will finalize the elective wheel when students, staff, and parents are pulled, engaged in deep discussions, and we assess the current facilities and supplies at each site. Shear will explore, wants to explore these topics in their elective wheel. STEAM, leadership, which is currently at the sixth grade level, community service, and social justice. Browns Valley has an interest in the following topics: increase or growing the current instruction that they currently have in art, STEAM, garden, drama, and they would like to develop a community, they'd like to develop community service learning where students would go out in the community and work in a given passion or interest. Thank you for letting me share tonight. And now I pass on to Director Ready.
Actually, Principal Silva, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take the reins here. So thank you, Principal Silva. In addition to the program, I mean, can you give the next slide, please? In addition to the programming options at each middle school, I would also like to share a little bit about what is available or planned to be available in regards to after-school care, transportation, enrollment support, and then transition support. Next slide, please. The after-school programs at Browns Valley and she will continue to be provided by NVUSD Childcare at Browns Valley and Boys and Girls Club at Shear. All of the middle schools will continue to offer ACE programming by the Napa County Office of Education. We are in the early phase, planning phase of determining which enrichment programs will be offered at each middle school. We are exploring options such as robotics and coding, and particularly enrichment activities that are focused on language development. We have concluded our transportation survey and will be determining which routes will be available. We have budgeted funds to ensure that transportation will be, there'll be transportation for students who are participating in after-school activities. Next slide, please. Our goal is to support a safe and responsive and inclusive transition. And this started with supporting students and families by informing them of their options. I want to take this time to thank the centralized enrollment office and the community liaisons who were critical in supporting our families with information during this decision-making time. As I mentioned in my staff report, multiple middle school tours and information sessions have been held. Additionally, students impacted by the closure of Harvest and the programming changes at River have received communication directly related to what their options are as we began to open enrollment. So we wanted to make sure that they knew what was available and what their choices were. Next slide, please. Lastly, but most importantly, we are planning activities to bring school communities together, starting in January to help students and families who are joining new schools feel a sense of welcoming and a sense of belonging. There will be intentional activities involving both students and families. While these activities are focused on students and families, we also know that we'll be working closely with our bargaining units, our bargaining unit leadership, to ensure that our staff also have a smooth transition during this time period. So we will be working closely with them and meeting with those staffs and making sure they're informed of what their options are as well, as we know more when we get to March. And I'm sorry, February and March. Next slide, please. And that concludes our presentation. We're ready for any questions or comments that you may have.
I have a question. So I saw in the presentation that you mentioned Unidos will be offering early and late flight. I know that part of our middle school redesign process was to sort of equalize our middle schools and make them more equitable with each other. And so my question is, are we creating more inequity between our schools by offering early slash late flight only at Unidos? Or will our legacy middle schools also be getting early and late flight?
I like the phrase legacy middle schools. It sounds much better than comprehensive. But no, I mean, sites will have the similar or same FTE. It's just a matter of how they do their master scheduling in terms of whether they offer early or late flight. I'm going to ask Director Ready if she wants to add a little bit to that in terms of responding to how sites go about how offering the ability to do early and late flight.
Thank you. Yes, and this is currently a practice at some of our comprehensives, our legacy middle schools as we have it right now. So it's not a new practice that we're adding at Unidos, but simply a practice that we're, simply a way of scheduling students that allows our students at Unidos in particular to articulate into performing arts programs at the high school. But currently, ACMS has an early flight option that includes performing arts. Harvest Middle School has physical education, and so we're just making sure that we can provide some of those offerings to students, knowing that Spanish is within their day. So as we schedule the master schedule and students enroll in courses, we'll have more specifics around what those courses will be.
Notice two middle schools very much lacking from that list of folks that offer early or late flight, and that was Redwood and Silverado. It seems that there might be parents at those schools who would be interested in such an offering. But for whatever reason, we don't appear to be offering those at those two schools. So it does seem like we're creating some inequitable access to extra classes.
Yeah, and I think that's what we're working toward, Trustee Gracia, in terms of next school year as we're working on, starting to work on master schedules in January and February, making sure that what you're referring to is the equitable access. That is, that was the intent of this, a part of this process. And we will continue to do that so that, you know, no matter what middle school you go to, that you do have access to some of the core offerings.
I have a sort of a related question about equitable access, and that's will the English language development explicit instruction be concurrent with intervention time and elective time, or will English learners have equal access to intervention and electives?
I'm going to ask Director Ready to respond to this because she's been working through it and thinking through some possible options that we can, we're exploring to make sure to address that concern that was raised in the middle school redesign process and also with our English learners through the West Ed study. Director Ready?
Yeah, thank you. So our ELD will look a little different across the various middle school options as K-8 and Unidos will have that embedded within their day. And Director Manning may be able to speak to the K-8 model a little bit better than I. As a comprehensive middle schools determine bell schedules and the details of their flex times, the schedule and access for English learners needs to be a top priority and looking at how we support language and electives within that model. And so these are next steps with our comprehensives around scheduling as we start to see like the number of students that are coming in who need that support, and then how we schedule that within the day. So I'll see if Director Manning has anything to add about the K-8s.
We do have a model at K-8 that we have developed that allows sports students to attend both an elective and an ELD class. It's all contingent upon enrollment, however. So if we're fully enrolled, we'll be able to move forward with the model that we've put together. If we're not fully enrolled, then we would need to explore other options.
So I have a related question as well. So at ACMS, we do have zero period PE, and we also have zero period choir. But what about access to some of the other electives like art? I know that ACMS, that they try to concentrate on those two to accommodate those who want additional elective because they have a period taken away because they're having ELD. So is there, is like, for example, the PE is probably the easiest thing to kind of open to everyone because everybody has to take PE. Is that going to be more available to all the students so that if they wanted to explore a second elective that they could?
I think as a general policy, and then there's a lot of intricacies that go into creating a master schedule in what you offer for zero or seventh period. We are not able to offer, you know, a seven-period day to all students. That's one of the things that was eliminated several years ago due to fiscal constraints. And so that is not something that we would do typically. It's to support enrollment in those programs that have alignment with high school, whether it's a visual or performing arts or some specific program such as that. At Unidos, it's done because students, their elective is Spanish. And so finding ways to make sure that they still have an opportunity to participate in something that will assist them when they go to high school. I don't know if Director Ready or one of the middle school principals want to weigh in around how you go about some of the intricacies involved in doing, determining which classes or courses are offered and who gets in them at the zero or seventh period.
I think typically you have some priorities around how you set who has access to those periods. And that depends on your student population. It could be, like you mentioned, to support students who have English language development or maybe students who are taking some sort of intervention course if those are offered at the site. So there's some sort of like priority system around who and how you would offer those two, noting that we can't have a seven-period day. And then within that, it's looking at what are the interests from the students? And then how, what are the best options to have? Like you mentioned, physical education is an easier option to have. And so what that does is it opens up another period within the day. So a student may be taking physical education early fight so that they can have that visual art or that other elective of their choice. But it really typically is driven by student interest and then the priorities that are set by, based off of, hopefully, typically would be the data around the students and their needs.
So just to clarify, I'm not really advocating for seven periods. My kid would probably not be much likely to find him up for zero period PE. But you know, I guess my question was kind of related to the access piece about what Trustee Gracia said about are we creating any inequities if we're only focusing on maybe certain programs over others? But that's just for a point of clarification. Thank you.
Yeah, I think just on the equity piece, right, just be, I think one thing that that makes me think about is equity doesn't mean having the same for everybody. Equity means is that we are adjusting depending on the school or the number of maybe English language learners that need that boost so that becomes the equity piece. So I just, you know, I think it's easy to look at the numbers and the who has how many classes and who has this and that. But I think there's also that bit of ability to have that flexibility. And I know it can sometimes get a little gray, but I think that's what we strive for. And I think that's the intricacies that I think Assistant Superintendent Andrew Jennings is, you know, with the directors in my, from how I'm receiving and trying to get at, that it's not going to be this, it's sing for all because that is actually not the straight definition of the equity piece of it. So I just, you know, wanted to share that.
I have one brief comment. One of the important elements of this work will be highlighting the new implementations as well as feedback and updates on student impact. I would love to see, and whatever you want to call them, town halls or something of the like at the individual middle school sites. Back-to-school nights are an appropriate format to introduce all the work the redesign team has constructed and the specific implementation at each site. But I hope we do follow-ups so that families in the community can see the actual effect on the students and campus culture at each individual site of the middle schools. This type of work has far-reaching tentacles, and I think we need to make sure that we communicate the purpose and subsequent impact of this important work. Communicating the relevance and connecting the dots to highlight the transformative nature of this work, I think will bring the work to life, and I hope that we take the opportunity to share it with our families. Thank you.
So I have a couple of questions. One has to do with, I guess I would like a little more information on the integration of the cultural arts element at Unidos. It's, it is going, it appears it's going to be integrated into the subject areas and not, it's not listed as one of the separate course. But is that, is that the intent that it would be incorporating art into, say, the English language arts courses or into the various core courses?
Yes, Trustee Julie, that's exactly right, that it would be integrated into the core content areas. I'm going to let Principal Uribe like maybe give a little bit more in-depth answer to that and sort of how, what that might look like as they develop the arts integration component of, you know, Unidos.
Yes, thank you. And that's a great question. You know, one of the big components or one of the big pieces that needs to take place is curriculum mapping. When we look at, for example, language arts and math, maybe science, social studies, and then our art standards and see how we can bridge those, right? And that's going to be, you know, a big piece, a big component that our teachers are going to have to engage in as we create these units of study that highlight key content areas. That is something that we are looking into right now. In fact, Director Ready and myself have a meeting with the director for the arts integration on, you know, timeline and what is this work going to look like? Because again, the driving force for the cultural arts piece is the curriculum mapping as we create these units of study. Director Ready, do you want to add anything to that?
I don't have anything additional to add, Principal Uribe. Good job.
Thank you. I agree. I'm looking forward to seeing how that, the creativity of that curriculum mapping will play out. It's, it's, I like it better as a way of developing appreciation of art and connecting the cultures that will be highlighted at Unidos. And rather than having a separate course that's devoted to art, you know, which is good in itself, but it's a different model. And I'm excited to see how that will work. The other question I had related to the transition aspect. I, Assistant Superintendent Andrew Jennings mentioned that there will be certainly be support for staff during the transition. And I know that that's a long process. It also depends largely on what the enrollment numbers are for each site. But is there a kind of an overview that, or I guess, has an overview of that transition process been shared with the staff at the current River School and at Harvest to make sure that they know what to expect, even if the details of it haven't resolved because of enrollment numbers?
The overall, the overview or timeline has not been shared with either staff yet. We have plans to sort of spend some time like holding space with both of those school sites in December. I think part of the effort and work since school started was really around trying to get the design, the first phase of this. the first phase of this design work done. And then as we sort of have a better idea of what the programming looks like and then the timeline for when, once open enrollment closes and we start to see where students are landing, then we're able to provide much more clarity to the staff around the process that's going through, that they will go through. And also, I don't know if Assistant Superintendent Page wants to weigh in here or not, but there's also some work that has to be done with the bargaining units around how the staffing is done. So I know we've been in conversations with NDA leadership around the how how that process will be done because it's going to probably look a little different than than the typical. And then the same thing in terms of classified staff. So that's part of also the work that's kind of happening behind the scenes before we sort of go public with a timeline for for staff. We just know that they, it's been challenging for them and having that level of uncertainty about where they're going to be working next year has been really difficult. And so we do recognize that and and we're trying to get them information that's as accurate as possible and that we can, we can implement on.
And I appreciate that. And I, I do recognize that it's really dependent on a lot of factors that are being developed as we speak, and this is evidence of it. And I just want to make sure that we're recognizing what you said at the end there, that it's a difficult thing to be a teacher who's uncertain about where they'll be teaching next year. And I want to make sure that we are providing adequate support for the, for the uncertain future.
And also just the more of the logistical pieces of packing and when that's going to happen and who's moving what and what's going where. And, you know, it's just getting more clarity about where people are going to land will help with with that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just wanted to add another comment or two. First of all, just to appreciate everybody involved in this process. It's really impressive to see the integrity of the process that you all have engaged in and how sort of organic it is, the the feedback from stakeholders, from parents to staff to students, to really arrive at an understanding of of how to move forward and be responsive in that way. And in particular, I'm just so gratified and happy to see the emphasis on social emotional learning. I know we've heard many examples at other board meetings about the excellent practices that are already in place at our comprehensive middle schools. But just to see this really being highlighted in in all of the middle school options. And and we really have a wonderful array of options for our community to choose from. But I just really want to thank you for highlighting that emphasis. I know that it's something that has already been going on. And we have a lot of expertise in our teachers and and staff members at all of our middle schools. But I'm really gratified to see that that designated time is going to be sort of, that's a stake in the ground for all of our sites as well as the the effort to integrate the social emotional learning within the context of the academic learning. Because as we spoke about earlier with the curriculum committee report and that presentation, that at secondary level, that's also a really appropriate way to do it. So I commend your efforts and I'm just certain that all of these middle school options are going to provide a really safe and supportive supportive community for all of our students. So thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Trustee Chu. So I have one more clarifying question. For the after school programming, I think there was a mention on middle schools and how, I guess this is the comprehensive middle schools, that all of them are going to have the ACE program from NCOE. So that is currently not at ACMS and that is being supported by Boys and Girls Club. So is the goal then to also have ACE there as well?
Thank you, Trustee Chu, for noticing that. I actually misspoke. You are correct. ACE is not offered at American Canyon Middle School. It is done through the Boys and Girls Club. I know one of the, so that, yeah, that's, that is, that is true. That the Boys and Girls Club would continue to provide the after school care and and programming that they do.
So maybe, well, I don't know anything about the ACE program. So maybe you can maybe just give me a real quick summary of how does that differ from what Boys and Girls Club has? And why do we not have it across all of our middle schools?
So the ACE program is funded through a grant from the California Department of Education. That's for after school programming. And typically, school sites that have it have really high unduplicated student counts. And American Canyon Middle School, even though I think, or even American Canyon currently does not, well, that's not true. So we, they just don't have as high number, a high percentage of students who are unduplicated. So as a result, there's not been an opportunity to offer that programming that's funded by the grant from the from California Department of Education. And then the ACE program is really an after school, like after school care program. They also run like a series of sports programs after school for students. I'm not quite sure what what all Boys and Girls Club does at ACMS. I imagine it's probably somewhat comparable.
It's kind of comparable. I mean, they have a standalone building adjacent to the school. But the school itself provides a lot of after school clubs and activities for the kids. So it kind of parallels, I guess. But thank you for that clarification. I definitely learned something today. And I am looking forward to this, the new middle school being rolled out. My older one is about to go to high school and I have another year before my younger one goes. So I'll look forward to seeing that change as my second one goes through. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. Let me, okay, so this is on item J2A. And this is just presentation and discussion. But I will ask if we have any public comment on this item, Mr. Michaels?
There is no public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you. Now move to our next item, which is J2B Educator Effectiveness Block Grant Plan.
This plan is is up for review by the Board of Trustees. It's based on some funding we're receiving specifically focused on professional development and professional learning. And so this is our opportunity to present, to share the plan. It's attached in the agenda and then it'll come back again in the December meeting for approval.
Okay, thank you.
So I had a question about this plan. Wanted to know, it's not at all clear to me why we wouldn't be using some of these funds in order to facilitate math training and improvement, since that's a pretty big focus in the district presently.
These funds will be used for all types of professional development that we will be doing. If the actual first item in the plan is focused on improving classroom instruction and and support for for teachers in that regard. So that is the area that, you know, we'll be looking at it through the the areas, the areas that we have a need such as math literacy. Those are the things that will be addressed in terms of our professional development with teachers. One thing that's pretty amazing about this particular pot of money is that it can be used for any instructional staff. So it can also address the needs, support our classified as well as our certificated staff.
Any other questions? Do I have any public comment on this item, Mr. Michaels?
There is no public comment for this item.
Great, thank you. And we now move on to item key of our agenda, starting with K1A. This is the audio and video upgrade for Evans Editorial.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
First by Trustee Gracia, second by Trustee Jankelx. Do we have public comment on this item?
There is no public comment for this item.
Student Board Rep?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose or abstain? And then K1B Audio and Video Upgrade for Evans Editorial.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
First by Trustee Gracia, second by Trustee Jankelx. Do I have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment for this item.
Thank you, Student Board Rep?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose or abstain? Thank you, Item K1C Redevelopment Agency Agreement Funds Sunsetting.
Move to approve.
Second.
First by Trustee Gracia, second by Trustee Dooley. Do I have public comment?
There is no public comment for this item.
Student Board Rep?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose or abstain? Item K1D Purchase of iPads for 11, 121 Student Use.
Move to approve.
Second.
First by Trustee Gracia, second by Trustee Riser. Do I have public comment?
There is no public comment for this item.
Thank you. Student Board Rep?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose or abstain? And then K1E Public Hearing and Adoption Resolution Number 2207. This is a resolution approving state board of education waiver for the Cárneros property. I, anything from the staff that needs to be mentioned, Dr. Mercedes, before I open to public hearing? Yes, Mr. Michael, is there anything that you'd like to do to frame this item?
I don't know that we, that anything is required, but in terms of framing the item, we've been doing, we did some work with the 711 Committee in terms of declaring this property as access. And so this is part of that process in terms of being able to market the property.
Okay, thank you, Rob. Okay, so thank you for that framing. And now we're going to open the item for public hearing. Mr. Michaels, do I have any comment at this time?
We do not have any public comment at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Michael. Seeing that there is no comment, I'm going to close the public hearing.
Move to approve.
Second.
First by Trustee Gracia, second by Trustee Riser. Student Board Rep?
Aye.
All those in favor?
I think we need a roll call.
Oh, thank you. It is, it is a roll call. Yeah. I mean, I should know this by now. Vera, if you could please conduct roll call now that we've had a first and a second.
Yes, Student Board Member B.
Aye.
Trustee Gonzales Mares.
Aye.
Trustee Jankowitz.
Aye.
Trustee Gracia.
Aye.
Trustee Riser.
Aye.
Trustee Water.
Aye.
Trustee Shu.
Aye.
Trustee Dooley.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vera. We are at the 10:30 mark. Can I get a motion to extend our meeting?
Yep, motion to extend till two.
Oh, God.
I see that and I raise it till three. I second that, actually.
Thank you for that motion to extend the meeting to two in the morning, just to be clear. First and a second, Student Board Rep?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose or abstain? Great, thank you.
Your parents will kill us if we keep you here till two.
Yeah, I think we would just make sure we follow you home and make sure you got home. Okay, so we are now moving to our item K2A. This is Request to Hire Less Than Fully Credentialed.
Move to approve.
Second.
First by Trustee Gracia, second by Trustee Dooley. Do I have any public comment on this item?
We do not have public comment for this item.
Thank you, Mr. Michaels. Student Board Rep?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose or abstain? Motion passes. Next item is K3A. This is for the Ellis Thorne Inc., Alta Heights and Bel Air Emergency Repair.
Move to approve.
Second.
First by Trustee Gracia, second by Trustee Water. Do I have public comment on this item?
There is no public comment for this item.
Thank you, Mr. Michaels. Student Board Rep?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose or abstain? Thank you. Next item is K3B National Aquatic Services Inc. Emergency Repair.
Move to approve.
Second.
First by Trustee Gracia, second by Trustee Dooley. Do I have public comment?
There is no public comment for this item.
Thank you, Mr. Michael. Student Board Rep?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose or abstain? Thank you. Item K3C, this is the Animal Damage Management Inc. Service Contract.
Move to approve.
Second.
First by Trustee Gracia, second by Trustee Water. Do I have public comment on this item?
There is no public comment for this item.
Thank you, Mr. Michael. Student Board Rep?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose or abstain? Next item is K4A Request to Call for Bids for the Finishing Kitchens Project Phase Four.
Move to approve.
Second.
First by Trustee Gracia, second by Trustee Dooley. Do I have public comment?
There is no public comment for this item.
Thank you, Mr. Michaels. Student Board Rep?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose or abstain? Motion passes. K4B Request to Call for Bids for the Silverado Middle School Recycled Water Project.
Move to approve.
Second.
First by Trustee Gracia, second by Trustee Dooley. And do I have public comment, Mr. Michaels?
There is no public comment for this item.
Thank you, Student Board Rep?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Abstain. Motion passes. Item K4C Request for Contract with GSM for Construction Administration Services for the Silverado Middle School Recycled Water Project.
Move to approve.
Second.
First by Trustee Gracia, second by Trustee Dooley. Do I have public comment?
There is no public comment for this item.
Thank you, Mr. Michael. Student Board Rep?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose or abstain? Motion passes. Next item, K4D Request to Call for Bids for the Fire Water Line Replacement Project at Napa High School.
Move to approve.
Second.
First by Trustee Gracia, second by Trustee Dooley. Do I have public comment?
There is no public comment for this item.
Thank you, Mr. Michael. Student Board Rep?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose or abstain? Thank you. Item K4E Request to Call for Bids for the Fencing Project Phase Three.
Move to approve.
Second.
First by Trustee Gracia, second by Trustee Dooley. Do I have public comment on this item?
There is no public comment for this item.
Thank you. Student Board Rep?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose or abstain? Thank you. Motion passes. Item K4F This is a request for payment to Division of State Architect for the final fees invoice for the Napa Junction Elementary School project.
Move to approve.
Second.
First by Christie Grass, second by Christie Julie. Do I have public comment?
There is no public comment for this item.
Thank you, Mr. Michaels, student board rep.
I.
All those in favor?
I.
Pose or abstain? Motion passes. Okay, thank you. We're now moving to items L of our agenda. These are informational items. And these items in this section do not require board action. We have informational item L one A, this is in regards to COVID nineteen public health state mandates and guidelines for California TK to twelve public schools. Um. So just checking to see if we have any public comment at this time, Mr. Michaels.
We do. First speaker is L Grega. Go ahead, please.
Hello, everyone. I'll be mentioning my time here, some key current events regarding mandates in the state of California, and to highlight how fast all of this is morphing and changing. As we have more information, which is the main reason I believe mandated COVID nineteen vaccines for children is not only unnecessary but harmful. The first is that in response to a FOIA, the CDC admitted it has no proof of a single recovered naturally immune individual that has spread the virus. The second, the CDC also very quietly acknowledged that an estimated one hundred and seventy, one hundred and eighty seven point six million people have had COVID and survived it and now carry natural immunity. If that doesn't say it all, the facts about natural immunity are simple. Every single peer reviewed study has shown that the naturally immune have a far greater than ninety nine percent. From having COVID and this immunity doesn't wane. In contrast, we know that these medical procedures, terms as vaccines, vaccines have a waning efficacy that lasts at max six months. And while the vaccinated readily transmit the virus, not so much for the naturally immune, we have almost two years of evidence to prove that children have virtually no risk of serious illness from COVID. We do, though, have proof that some of them will have inflamed hearts and other serious adverse effects. There are more reported deaths from these shots than there are from COVID in children. This doesn't make sense. Again, if naturally naturally immune children get longer, more robust immunity, why put them at risk for death or other adverse events? With a shot that had only forty six hundred participants in two months of testing and trials, this is outrageous. This is not an emergency. The numbers are similar to the flu, which we cannot vaccinate against because it's always morphing. Why don't we mandate flu vaccines? Won't COVID always morph? It has many times already, and the vaccine that is approved for this first is approved for this first variant, not the Delta, which is most prevalent in Napa County. So will this be effective? Dr. Lucio talks a lot about caregivers, caregivers of children dying from COVID that the kids give to them. But if the hospital numbers are fifty fifty, vax on vax, and we know that vaccination doesn't stop transmission, and they're not even getting the current variant vaccine because it doesn't exist, then how can we mandate this? We know in Napa County, there have been zero deaths of children from COVID, and to quote Lucio last night, probably maybe under ten hospitalized. Pfizer admitted recently that the risk of myocarditis from the shot would be assessed in a five year trial minimum. Our children are not guinea pigs. Testing sites on the corner to shame your unvaxxed youth and teachers is gross invasion of privacy. What has happened to our right to privacy and right to choose? This is government overreach, and our children's right to bodily autonomy is not for you to decide. You are a school district, not the mouthpiece of the governor who lines your pockets with blood money. We will not comply. Take that testing site off of your corner. You're grossly violating people's right to privacy. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Our next speaker is Jacqueline R. Go ahead, please.
Hi, can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Um, first I want to speak on the vaccine informational. Meeting that they put on last night. Well, I appreciate they were answering questions. They did not address any of my questions and several other parents' questions. There was misinformation. This is not a pandemic of the unvaccinated. In the last six months, Napa has seen more deaths from vaccinated than unvaccinated. Keep in mind that partially vaccinated or anyone who isn't two weeks past their second mRNA dose. Or two weeks past their Johnson and Johnson jokes fall into the unvaccinated category. Most of you are aware, Sonoma County had a fifteen year old boy die after receiving his Pfizer. Emergency use authorization vaccine. Sonoma County sheriffs are attributing his death directly to the vaccine. We have not had any children die from COVID in Napa County, and I don't want to see one die from this vaccine. Where there is risk, there must be choice. This month, in response to an attorney's FOIA request. The CDC admits that they have no record of an unvaccinated person spreading COVID after recovering from COVID. Many children in Napa, mine included, fall into the COVID recovered category and continue to have natural antibodies almost a full year later. This injection should not be a one size fits all. Not every student can or should take it, and therefore it should not be a requirement to attend school. I again want to stress that I believe that what you are doing to our school, to our schools is causing more harm than good. I am extremely concerned about how many children you voted to expel today. I'm not saying it wasn't warranted, but it was alarming to hear that many children are struggling to the point of needing to be expelled. I'm also concerned about the rise of suicides, suicide attempts, and suicidal ideation that we are seeing in Napa County amongst our children. Not only am I concerned about those students, but I'm also concerned about the friends and fellow students who are losing friends and classmates at an alarming rate. We, as a society, are failing our children. I urge you to look at what your part in this has been and what your part will be in the future. Many parents are happy with the decisions you've made, but many are also upset with the decisions that you are making for our children. You are supposed to represent all the childrens in the family of this community, not just the ones who align with your thinking. We, as a community, need to do better for our children. Thank you.
Speaker.
Yes, next speaker is Aisley. Go ahead, please.
Hi, I just wanted to say thank you so much for everything you're doing by upholding the state mandates and keeping all of the kids safe. Kids have been dying from COVID all over the globe, and that's a proven fact, and I find it really scary that. Parents and those not even attached to the Napa Valley Unified School District. Are admitting that they would rather risk their kids' safety. Then get them inoculated when it's something that we've been doing for decades now. So again, thank you so much for your time. One other comment I would just like to make about this matter is that I am very concerned. About the protests that are being held in front of the Napa Valley Unified School District, right next to Napa High School. Having a group of unvaccinated and unmasked belligerent people yelling at kids as they're trying to go home or get food after school. Is very concerning, and I hope that it can be addressed by this board, if that means increased security. Alerting parents or alternative ways home, I think it should definitely be looked into. Thank you so much for your time.
Next speaker.
Yes, next speaker is Pam Demick. Go ahead, please.
Yes, I'm calling because I'm very, very concerned that you guys are going to be having those clinics. And you're going to be turning the Napa schools into the one stop clot shop. And. If for the innocent children of Napa, and I don't think you guys really want to be blamed for this. So what's the plan when the school clinics inject the wrong dosage into a five year old? And then, and she ends up in the ER or worse. Recently, fourteen kids were given the wrong COVID vaccine dose at a Bay Area clinic. One would have assumed that there would have been more in place to prevent this from happening, but obviously there wasn't. Those children were given twenty micrograms of a dosage instead of the recommended ten. And now they're concerned about long term effects. So what is your plan for a catastrophic event like this? Because this will come back on you, just like the malpractice that occurred at the Oakland Coliseum event this past year. Any consent form that you give them to sign won't be worth the paper it's printed on if a child is gravely injured on your turf. You aren't protected from the court of public opinion, only the manufacturer is protected. You really should stay in your lane and work harder to get those math scores up. All night long, I listened to you talk about the social and emotional developmental welfare of these children. And yet you still have those children wearing filthy face diapers all day long. Shame on you. Good night.
Next speaker.
There's no more public comment for this item.
Thank you, Mr. Michaels.
So I do want to comment on this item. I continue to be perplexed by the folks that. Come to our meeting and tell us that we're doing all these bad things. And at the end of the day, you're in the wrong place. You need to go and talk to the governor of the state of California. And the California Department of Public Health. They are the ones that are making the rules, and if you seek to have change happen. That will be effective in the policies that you are concerned about. The person to address your comments to is the governor. He is the one that is putting the mandate out. And he is the one who is requiring this throughout the state of California. It is not us, and we are not pushing this. It is something we are required to do, and we must follow the law.
I just wanted to add one more clarification that I've heard a misconception that the vaccine mandate for students will involve emergency use authorization vaccines. And that's simply not true. Any vaccine mandate that goes into place will be after that vaccine has been fully approved for that age group.
Okay.
Well, I don't, you know, I, when I. As you can tell, I'm almost struck dumb, which is uncharacteristic of me, but. Having seen. Having seen unvaccinated people in my neighborhood get very, very sick with COVID very recently. I have to say I'm a believer in vaccinations. Okay, having been in a hospital. That was packed to the gills this summer with people who had COVID. And eighty percent of the people there had COVID and had not been vaccinated. You know, we are in the middle of a health emergency, ladies and gentlemen. I mean, it's not a hallucination, it's real.
I also would like to point out that the concept of natural immunity hides a very dangerous level of sacrifice. You know, you can use percentages and numbers, but the numbers correspond with people. And were we to follow that to its logical conclusion within our district, it. It corresponds with students and with staff that we are responsible for. So suggesting natural immunity suggests that there's a. A. Comfortability that we would have to have sacrificing members of our community, and I don't have that comfort, and it's disturbing that some do.
Okay, thank you for everybody's comments. Next item under our informational is it. The timeline for review and action on the charter petition for my commerce charter middle school. We will start to see if there's the initial comments or not. Let me ask Mr. Michaels if we have any public comment on this item.
We do not have public comment for this item.
Thank you, Mr. Michaels. Anything else to add about this informational item? Okay. All right, let me scroll down, and now we're on to item L two B, enrollment report. You want to make a comment there?
I wasn't sure if we were going to have. An opportunity for public comment first, or if we should comment now.
For the enrollment report? Yeah. You can go ahead. If you want to go first, yeah.
Yeah, my comment was just that the news continues to be grim. We continue to lose more and more students. Which directly impacts funding.
It's happening in districts all over the state. And all you have to do is look at the newspapers with puff pieces about how expensive houses are. There's a reason for you right there.
And do we have any public comment on this item?
No public comment for this item.
Thank you, Mr. Michaels. Next item is the quarterly report on Williams Uniform Complaints.
Great job on no complaints.
Are there any public would like to comment on this item?
There is no public comment for this item.
Thank you, and item L four A Chronic Absentism Report. Seeing none from the board. Are there any folks in the room that like to comment? Virtually. Do I have any speakers, Mr. Michaels?
There's no public comment for this item.
Thank you. And that concludes our informational items. Now additional suggestions and comments from board members and superintendent.
So I'll just make a brief comment that I realize this is marks a year now that you have been serving as president of our board, and. I wanted to thank you for your term of service, and they say that you've done a good job. So thank you.
I second that.
I third that.
He jumped, he got there before me. I was going to say the same. Thank you for, as one of the new trustees, it sets a good example for us as we. Progress along. Song. Progress along that path toward. Sitting in that chair, so thank you.
It sounds like you remembered more on the positive note versus on the actual, like, wow, she's, she's done.
It's all positive.
More on the positive side of things, so.
One hundred percent positive.
Thank you. Yeah, I think my words have been shared at every meeting, and. I look forward to supporting the next board chair and any way possible. And because at the end of the day, I think it's, it's a team. It's our governance team. I really don't see it as just me. It's all of us. It's hard to. To get the thanks when it really is like, thank you, because.
You will open on twelve nine.
That's true. I have one more left.
You have a.
And then.
A final few minutes.
Final few minutes, yes.
And a special.
But today I got to. Use the gavel one last time.
Yeah, we got a public hearing.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you, Jesse Garcia, and for everyone. Future agenda items?
I do have a future agenda I might like to request. We had such a great experience hearing from our student board rep Emily Bit about her activism and involvement with her. Students for Climate Action. I never know if I put that name right. I'm sorry. There's a lot of different organizations with similar words. So I wanted to request a presentation from our alternate student board representative, Jimena Alvarez-Paya. We've heard from our, some of our Napa High students of the month, or both of the students of the month this evening, were involved in the Brain Change to Mind Group at Napa High. Whose purpose is to de-stigmatize mental health issues and to raise awareness and to. Spread that message, and so I would really be interested in having our alternate student board rep. And perhaps with her class. and perhaps with her, um, classmates, maybe some of the ones that we honored here tonight, um, to, to share with the board and the broader community that also that very important work that's happening. I think it's really great to highlight the leadership and activism of our students, and I would love to hear more about Bring Change to Mind.
I'll note that, trustee Rizer.
Yes, and, um, gee, I'd like to say, aside from wishing you all a happy Thanksgiving, um, and where we should all be counting our blessings, um, it was really nice to have our student of the month in the room. You know, we really miss that. It's, the students of the month are the, are, are familiar, the high point of, um, of, of, of the school board meeting, so it was nice to have you in the room giving your speech. I'm just sorry your parents couldn't have been here.
All right, I guess I could request that, that information on the decline from first to second grade and more information on why that happens. That would be a nice presentation to have as it regards to math.
Okay, last item is adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
Second. First by trustee grass, and second by trustee Julie. Student board rep.
Hi.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I. Oppose or abstain? Good night, everybody. Thank you.